We'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Floyd and followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated, board members, would you please record your attendance? We now move on to items of particular public interest, which is the public comment section of our meeting. We have 30 minutes for public comment. We have 30 people signed up, so you will get one minute each. All persons should state their name, have already written their address on the sign-up form, and identify if you are speaking for yourself or for an organization, please. The Chair has the right to terminate remarks of an individual who is disruptive or does not adhere to the rules. Your remarks must be on the topic of this meeting tonight, which is COVID-19 protocols or COVID-19 mitigation strategies, excuse me. Public comment is one of several ways the Board can hear from constituents. The other manner include email, phone, and in-person meetings. And I want to stress this tonight, business decorum is expected. No shouting, clapping, holding signs, any disruption during remarks of others, also during this Board doing its work. Disruptive individuals will be asked to leave at the first occurrence of the disruption and escorted out by the deputy or by one of the deputies here. Again, no signs during the meeting. And we will, after you speak, if you want to be escorted out by a deputy, please raise your hand. Or after this meeting, if you want to be escorted out, please let one of the deputies know. We will be taking a break after public comment, so that if people want to leave or have other things they need to do tonight, they can do that. So now we'll move on to public comment. Our first, I'm going to call, I'm going to call three people up at a time. Kristin Benton, I'm sorry, I can't read this next name.
Daniel Jordan.
Yeah, oh, I can read that one, thank you, Daniel. And STEM, Steve Taber, does that ring a bell with anybody? I'm going to say, I don't know how to tell you, let me see if we can give you any clues. I don't want to disclose an address. Steve Taber, Franklin, Tennessee. Okay, all right. First speaker is Kristin Benton. Oh, Kristin and everyone else, Mr. Hawe on the end is the timekeeper, so he will let you know when your time is up. Thank you, please proceed.
Kristin Benton, Moms for Liberty, District 5. The one-sidedness of walking into this meeting where all of you are prepared.
Sorry, ma'am. Please go ahead.
Is my time, okay.
Yeah, restarts.
Okay. Kristin Benton, Moms for Liberty, District 5. The one-sidedness of walking into this meeting where you all are prepared but parents are left guessing what's up for discussion is yet another embarrassment to what used to be a school district I was proud of. So here I am to address the phantom agenda. While we were waiting in the parking lot, the Texas Supreme Court ruled against schools mandating masks. As Attorney General Paxton said, "The Texas Supreme Court has sided with the law and the decision to enforce mask mandates lies with the Governor's legislatively granted authority. Mask mandates across our state are illegal. Take heed, Tennessee is in these rocky waters, and I ask that you be on the just side of the law." In light of denying perfectly healthy kids an education under the guise of contact tracing and quarantines, know this: Emergency online learning is not acceptable. We need virtual education providers like Stride and others who have proven online platforms that work. I removed my children from Williamson County schools last year and used K-12. Stride, K-12, TNVA, is a free online public school education that has specialized in virtual education for over 20 years. They have offered their platform for use by school districts in the state, private labeled for the district, and it was declined. You can adopt that platform, or every parent in this room can transfer to TNVA and become part of Union County Public Schools. I do want to congratulate all of you on one accomplishment. Jason Golden and all of you are on the verge of presiding over the largest unenrollment in the history of Williamson County schools.
Next is Daniel Jordan. Daniel Jordan.
I'm Marine Sergeant Daniel Jordan, here with facts. As Steve Bannon says, "Science, not scientism." Loving parents want to protect their kids. The question is how. If you think masks work, you have been deceived. N95 filters at .03 microns. Viral particles are measured in nanometers. A nanometer is 1/1000th, the size of a micron. Remember when Cracker Barrel had smoking and non-smoking sections and it was with a lattice wall? That's what your masks are doing. Makes sense, right?
No clapping.
Science has proven cloth masks breed bacteria.
Excuse me, sir. There will be no clapping or disruption. There will be none. Please proceed.
How much more time do I get back?
He stops the timer.
Outstanding. Science has proven cloth masks breed bacteria, which is horrible and foolish, especially putting that on my child. The CDC just admitted that PCR tests can't tell the difference between flu and Corona. Doctors have been saying this for over a year. You were elected to care for our kids' education, not their health care. I'm inviting you six to change your vote on masks and on contact tracing, or respectfully step down. Dems and RINOs across the nation, America First patriots are coming for your office, from school board to Congress. You might have deep pockets, but we've got the whole.
Time, time. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Steve Taber. Steve Taber, Steve Taylor. Okay, we'll go to the next three. Nick Schreiber, Patricia Lucinte, and Jim Bicknell.
Schreiber, Air Force veteran, District 9. You know, I got to say what the first lady said. You guys keeping the public in the dark, all of a sudden calling these special meetings. You guys are, I don't know what the hell call you. You know, you guys are still in dereliction of your duties, like I told you last time. And Brad over there on his phone the whole time the last time, that's unacceptable. You guys need to start listening to people around here.
Sir.
Yes, ma'am.
There will be no comments about people on the Board as well. Please keep your comments, please keep your comments germane to this discussion.
Not listen to his constituents.
Please proceed.
Please proceed. He needs to listen to his constituents, not play around. You guys too. If you look around at what's happening, all these school boards around the country, you guys are not listening. So start paying attention. The few of you that do, thank you so much. The rest of you, you will be out. And when it comes to your mask mandates, I'm here to tell you, and I speak with a lot of these folks out here, we will not comply with your crap.
Next speaker is Patricia Lucinte.
Hi, my name is Patricia Lucinte, and I'm a parent of a kindergarten at Perry Creek Elementary. As a parent, it's my responsibility to speak on behalf of my child who cannot speak for himself, my happy, healthy child who joyously skips into school every day. In my opinion, you have all abandoned your responsibility as elected officials to do what is best for our children and their right to an education. After your mandate went into effect, cases in our county spiked 57%, with the biggest spike in children ages 5 to 13. Keeping a germ-infested cloth on their face all day is putting them at greater risk for illness. They hang them on the fence at recess, drop them on the floor, touch surfaces and fidget with them, touch their eyes, trade them with each other, and who knows what else because they're children. Before mask mandates at camps, activities, there was no spike. Other elementary schools have no spike. Just because people are absent does not automatically mean they have COVID. It means people are already adhering to the mitigation strategies that you have given us. Remote learning robs our children from learning key life skills such as communicating, problem-solving, making relationships.
Time, thank you, ma'am. The next person is Jim Bicknell.
Y'all should know me by now. I'm here every time. My name's Jim, District 3. Y'all love the CDC, and you love to quote them to do your mandates. The CDC that you claim you follow released a report in May that studied 90,000 kids in 169 schools. The study found that masking, social distancing, classroom barriers, and HEPA filters did not have a statistically significant benefit. None. If y'all are planning on defying the Governor's executive order with your mask stuff, we will defy your mandate. You're setting the precedent to us. And if there's people here dressed in scrubs and masks to push an agenda, there's no way in hell I would let my kid anywhere near you when they were sick.
Our next speakers are Erin Newman, Natalie Showalter, and Marissa Diplock. I also would ask future speakers to refrain from profanity, please. Remember, we do have students watching this live feed. Thank you. Erin Newman, Natalie Showalter, Marissa Diplock. Are you ready? Okay, go ahead.
District 5. It's great to see so many parents full of righteous indignation because they care about facts. We hear hospital testimony about everything that's going on in the hospital, but yet we actually haven't heard anything about how masks are effective. You heard him talk about the CDC. I can tell you about another CDC study that was done in 2015. It advised the medical community that masks are not effective medical devices or germ barriers in the operating room or in a hospital. That was 2015. Voting to mask children is misconduct. You don't have the right and you have no evidence to back your vote. Moving forward with a vote to mask children will expose yourself to ouster lawsuits, which allows us to rid the public of unworthy officials, a quote from State Exrel Jones v. Luper, and enables us to free the public from an unfit officer, State v. House. I can tell you confidently, we are ready to proceed with these lawsuits. So you can vote based on science and law, or you can circle the drain of denialism and vote based on your feelings and be subject to losing your seat. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Natalie Showalter. My friend Robbie was on, number three on the list, but he was skipped, so I'm giving him my time. Sir, I did not, by our rules, you signed up with a Nashville address.
No, I didn't.
He's 26 on the list.
Right. He's also number three on the list with a Nashville address. So I will give you your place in line with your Franklin address. That's our rules.
Okay, you want me to come up 26?
Yes.
Beautiful semantics.
Thank you. Just to be clear, that is our policy, that preference is given to residents of Williamson County. That is our policy. Nashville is not Williamson County. Okay, well, we'll move on. Please go ahead.
My name is Natalie Showalter, Spring Hill, Moms for Liberty. This is an email that my son sent the Board a few weeks ago. He's at Ban right now, so he could not come, but I wanted to read it since we only heard back from two people. To whomever it may concern, hi, I'm a senior, and I just wanted to thank you for letting us return to school with the option to wear a mask. I've been looking forward to my senior year due to last year being so crappy. I was miserable at school in my mask and the way everything was conducted around wearing them. I had a large anxiety spike due to wearing a mask and being able to be quarantined at any possible time. I had a large acne increase on my face while wearing a mask, and it lowered my self-confidence. I was really peeved by the fact that we were required to wear masks as well as quarantine. Quarantining was awful and was threatening to take away my best learning experience. Since I was miserable from the masks and the inconvenience of quarantining, I had a terrible year. And it didn't only affect the way I thought about the year, it affected my academics as well. I failed a science class for a credit last year due to lack of motivation because of how awful the year was. I almost failed multiple classes, and I didn't end up failing what could have been my final science class.
Time, thank you. Marissa Diplock.
Marissa Diplock, Ward 3. I'm a parent of three children. I come to you tonight as a parent of a child with anaphylactic food allergies. 4% of the population has food allergies. Nine years ago, my child started navigating your school system in an unsafe environment. Yes, I said unsafe. Most of you probably don't realize that those signs on the school doors in the classrooms that says "No peanuts allowed," that's actually only a request. You can only request another parent doesn't send in a food allergy into your child's classroom. It is not a demand, it is a request. I found that out in the fourth grade. And as such, I request, no, actually, I demand, that the same rules apply to masks and COVID restrictions. You may only request masks, and you know exemption should be required to attend school unmasked because no request is required to send in food allergies into the classrooms. Why are children with food allergies not guaranteed the same safe standards that you are trying to push on all the children as a whole? What happened to the save-one-child rule? Mr. Allen, I request that you take off your assistant superintendent shoes and put on your old principal shoes. You are much.
Our next speakers are Kelly Jackson, Jay Leslie, and Jay Halterman.
Kelly Jackson, I'm a Ward 5 parent, Moms for Liberty. I'm not going to stand up here and give you more science. That argument will fall on deaf ears. The material point is that the state of Tennessee and the legislation the State House has put in place to determine what your authority is, says that you do not have the authority to make health care decisions for students, period. A mask is a medical device. TCA Code 492-203, Part 15, Subsections B2, states that the only thing the law allows you to do is send a visibly sick student or staff member home to see a doctor. There is no mention of masks or your authority to issue a mandate for them. This is also the opinion of a Williamson court judge and a Knox County law director who advised their Board not to implement a mask mandate based on that Williamson case, as well as other legislation that doesn't indicate anywhere the Boards of Education have authority over health decisions for students, let alone masks. And you ignoring those opinions do not make them less valid. You know it, and we know it. Follow the law, respect the rights of parents to choose for their own children. Our children, our choice.
Time, Jay Leslie, as our next speaker.
My name is Jana, and I moved here just three weeks ago with my family from Madison, Wisconsin. There, I was a lone voice in the wilderness when it came to parent choice. My kids were forced out of school for a year and a half due to recommendations of some ad hoc medical committee appointed by the school board that was more content to follow a narrative than follow the science. Tired of that COVID tyranny, we moved our family to Tennessee, a place that would allow us more agency over our lives. Imagine my surprise to move here and find yet another school board overreaching the power that was given them. Well, guess what? I won't stand for it. I won't be silent. I'm adding my voice to a growing movement of parents that are pushing back against government overreach. You have awoken a giant, and we will remember that. You betrayed the trust given to you when we go to the polls.
Our next speaker is Jenny Halterman.
Jenny Halterman, I think it's District 3. First, I'm wondering why Mr. Fiskus is here, if he's resigned.
And then, ma'am, Jenny.
Everyone can, I am here for the parents to speak up for parents' rights for everyone in this room, regardless of their viewpoint regarding COVID. Your job as school board members is to manage education only. Parents are responsible for children's health. Parents' rights have been violated for however long now. Options, you have made options available for those seeking a safe place for education. You have offered online education, you've offered the ability to wear a mask. If you mandate masks, you take away a safe place for children to learn, for students whose parents believe that education happens in three ways: when breathing oxygen freely, when seeing faces. I'm a literacy, I teach literacy, and that's required.
Time.
And third, when work.
Our next speaker is, I'll call up three more people. Charles Chapman, Tyson Solinski, and I believe it's Mary Smith.
Charles Chapman, 11th District parent, husband to an elementary teacher in the district, and two students. And I'm very sad about what's going on here. My students made it through the entire school year last year. When they went back to school, we never got any kind of contact letter that they had a contact with somebody with a COVID case. In the two weeks that we've been back at school this year, we've gotten five, five letters of contact. So I know that this is an emotional issue for everybody, but my experience says that what we did last year with masking and distancing did work. It kept my kids safe. And it is not working this year. We've had five letters. We had to keep my youngest daughter out of school for a few days because she was a reading partner with another student who was positive. I don't know where people are hearing this, that it doesn't work. Masks work. Distancing works.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Vaccine works.
Thank you. Mr. Solinski.
Thank you. My name is Tyson Sosinski. I'm in Fairview District 1, and I want to say that I've spent the last 25 years providing services to my community and the surrounding communities. And prior to that, I served eight years, obligated eight years of my life defending a particular word. I think that should mean something to everyone. That's freedom. Freedom of choice. You have the freedom to not wear a mask, you have the freedom or right to wear a mask. Don't infringe upon my freedom as a parent. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Smith.
I'm not sure how much this is going to get across. I'm really nervous. It's my first time speaking, wasn't expecting to, but I've been supported, and here I am. I think what we've all seen over the last two weeks is leadership matters. Strong leadership matters. What we have to do is we have to understand that COVID is here to stay. We have to find solutions. You all are our elected leaders. You lead through serving your community. That's what we're asking of you. Find solutions that work for everyone, whether it's giving the kids more time outside, whether it's teaching better nutrition, whatever the case might be. Something we all can do is we can all pray. Prayer is something we all need desperately. We're in crazy times, and I appreciate what you're doing, but you've got to listen, and you've got to follow real science, not government bureaucrats and not the media. Thank you.
Our next three speakers are Gary Graham, Mandy Buckholz, and Justin Canoe. Gary Graham, Mandy Buckholz, and Justin Canoe, please.
Parents and their doctor know, excuse me, know what is best for their children, not eight school board members and a superintendent. According to the Cleveland Clinic research, which has just came out, and they're still doing research today, the only mask that does work any at all is an N95, not a cloth mask, not one of the paper masks. It's an N95 with the N95 on it. That was provided by OSHA, who's done research on the mask, and they just updid them again in 2020. So wearing these cloth masks and sitting there with your mask on, you look kind of silly to me. Them masks don't do anything. Only they do, might affect the oxygen to your brain, so you could use it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mandy Buckholz.
Mandy Buckholz. The coronavirus has an estimated diameter of 60 to 140 nanometers, and a single human hair is 400 to 1,000 times larger than that. In July 2020, the Center of Disease Control stated that no qualified virus isolate, they haven't been able to isolate that virus, so they did a computer-generated one. And the standardized testing, which is called the cycle threshold, should not be greater than 24. And what we've been doing is anywhere between 33 to 45 cycles. There are several doctors who have lost their jobs because hospital administrations will not allow them to treat the patients when they come in. And in 2009, there were more deaths from H1N1, and the highest cases ranged from age 5 to 24 years with 26.7%. And ages 0 to 4 cases ranged from 22 to 9%.
Our next speaker is Justin Canoe. Ma'am, if you have something, ma'am, you can leave it at the front, please. Thank you.
This way they can pass it around and take a picture of it?
Ma'am, if anybody has anything, we ask them to leave it at the front. Thank you. Our next speaker is Justin Canoe.
To be back, just didn't want the only voices you hear to be theirs. So 14,000 kids in the last seven days, 36% of the cases in the state have been kids, 60 kids in the ICU, 1,300 treated in ERs in the last week. Governor Lee said kids don't get sick with COVID, and Marsha said it too, and they were simply wrong. Now, schools are closing all around us. We have rural districts with bus drivers running two routes, which means some kids get picked up at 5:00 a.m. Pretending this is, excuse me, pretending this is not happening is not leadership. It's the opposite. I get that people have issues with being masked. We should be allowing remote learning when parents want it, which is choice, which is what people seem to claim to support in here. Governor Lee says he's doing all he can to keep kids in school in person, but he seems to be doing exactly the opposite. And just as a last thing, over 90% of those in the ICU are unvaccinated. If you really want to take care of kids, get vaccinated.
Enough, enough.
You can boo me, but I would hope that you would.
Time. Our next speaker, our next speaker.
Minority.
Sir, sir, you're done. Our next speaker is, we have Annika Reardon, Jessica Bell. Sir, sir, you're out of order. Our next speaker is Annika Reardon, Jessica Bell, and Andrew Zinn.
My name is Al Kai Reardon.
I'm sorry.
I'm the father of three Williamson County children.
Sir, I'm sorry. Let me turn your mic on. Please, start all over. Thank you.
My name is Al Kai Reardon. I am the father of three Williamson County children. My wife is a physician at Vanderbilt Children's Hospital, and I am a volunteer firefighter with Williamson County. I respond to over 400 calls per year. I'm also former military, 3rd Ranger Battalion, 75th Ranger Regiment. I've served my country. I have taken the oath to protect my country and to protect my community several times. Right now, we are in a worldwide pandemic. It doesn't help to bear our heads in sand. Masks work. It has been proven. N95 masks work better. I used one when I did CPR on a 49-year-old man who had died from COVID. I used one, he lived. I use cloth masks and these masks when I respond to other medical calls that are not COVID-19. They work. They do work. It has been shown.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Bell and Andrew Zinn.
My name is Jessica Bell. I'm from District 2. A recent transplant from California, fortunate to arrive just in time to get my children enrolled in in-person school to be faced with government attempting to teach me how to manage my family's health. I was fortunate to recover from multiple autoimmune conditions without the support of the doctors who told me I would not recover and would be kept alive because of pharmaceuticals. I chose to find physicians who empowered me to recover my health completely. I stand here to remind you that you get to choose which doctor to entrust with your health. As a sovereign being, I get to choose the medical voices I listen to. I do not consent, nor will I comply with applying a medical device to my healthy children or any other failed public health measures imposed for our school. I stand for informed consent and medical freedom. I carry the torch to ensure the health of my family, and I enjoy the many benefits of those investments to health to prevent illness. Who here has heard of any public health officials discussing how to build a healthy immune system or how to be an unviable host for any virus or pathogen?
Time. Our next speaker is Andrew Zinn. Andrew Zinn, Jason Robelay, and Corey Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Zinn from Thompson Station. Against my normal personality, I'm going to try and keep this lighthearted. I have twin boys who are entering I have twin boys who are entering kindergarten this year. For the first time in Williamson County schools, I can tell you, as an educator and as someone who has been a substitute teacher in Williamson County schools during this, that masks do not stop the spread of this virus. It only stops the spread of friendship and learning and communication that is effective. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jason Robelia. Jason Robelia. Robelia?
Jason Robledo, Franklin, Tennessee. My kids go to Page. Obviously, public sentiment here, I would say, is not really with the mask. Not really with-- yes. So as elected officials, I think it would be a good thing to go with the will of the And the psychological damage that this has done with the masks and the quarantines and the virtual school, there's been more suicides probably with this and deaths of despair from alcoholism, drug addiction, and everything else. So let's just smarten up. If you feel comfortable wearing a mask, wear a mask. God bless. If you don't want to wear a mask, it's optional. You don't have to wear a mask. That's the way it should be. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Corey Martinez.
I'm shorter than everybody else. I, too, get nervous coming up here, which is crazy because at this point, it's like y'all are just bad babysitters that won't leave the house. But coming here from California as well, top of the year, I have twin boys that are freshmen this year, so we just bypassed the last little secret meeting that we had. But on behalf of everybody else, I just, walking around in Tennessee, I see people with masks on, and I, no offense, but I question, if you believe in the gospel, I question your faith. And if you don't believe in the gospel, I question your intelligence and your instinct. What I'm really counting on right now is that we can go back to instinctual reprimanding and just seeing really in ourselves how we are treating this and seeing how obvious the world is changing right now and what side we want to be on with that. Because there's a spiritual warfare going on right now that's much bigger than the world we see. And stop being so rude, please. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robbie Starbuck. Robbie Starbuck, Liz. Robbie Starbuck, Liz Custer, and Landon Starbuck.
Hi, guys. So I'm Robbie Starbuck, father of three Williamson County kids, and today I'll be your science teacher. So here we go. Here's some science for you guys. You all say you believe the science, so here's some science. The CDC says that kids 17 and under account for 0.057 of all COVID-involved deaths in the U.S. That is not the percentage of all the children in America. Our recent census showed that we had 74.2 million minors in America. Okay? So let's plug those numbers in. That means that an American child has a .00047% chance of dying from COVID. Okay? NASA recently announced that the asteroid Benu has a 0.058 chance of hitting Earth for an extinction-level event by the year 2300. That means there's literally a 12,000% better chance of an asteroid coming and hitting Earth and killing all of us than kids dying of COVID. And I'm not done yet. There's also a better chance in middle Tennessee of a child dying of a lightning strike than dying of COVID. That's statistically from your government sources.
Our next speaker is Liz Custer. Our next speaker is Liz Custer.
How do you speak after Robbie Starbuck? I don't know. Anyway, I am Liz. I live in District Nine now. I used to live in District Seven, and my youngest went to school with Sheila's daughter. I'm from a family of doctors, my grandpa, my dad. I could never play hooky from school. I tried. It didn't work. But what I think, when I look at the situation, my kids all went to Brentwood and all that, and they're grown now, but I have grandkids in District Seven. CDC website says kids ages zero to 19 have a 99.97% survival rate from COVID. My son got COVID. He's 32. He took ivermectin. Guess what? He did what my dad said for years, wash your hands. Last week, a lady talked about her child not being able to wash her hands. I think we have some mitigation strategies that we're just kind of overlooking. These kids need to be allowed ample time to wash their hands 15 million times a day. I mean, they really do. This is huge. This is a big deal. My dad-- I'm sick of hearing it, but it's a big thing. So washing your hands, looking at the statistics, and ivermectin, I mean, they heal my son.
Time. Thank you. Our next speaker is Landon Starbuck.
They won't let her back in, but I have what she would like to say.
Just a moment, please.
I identify as Williamson County.
Yeah, we need to move on. She's not here.
I'm sorry, sir. We have to go on to our next speaker, Jen Baker. Jen Baker, Lisa Vale, and Denise Piffkey.
Because I identify as Landon.
Jen Baker, you're our next speaker.
Robbie. 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 Robbie.
You would like, here we go.
Are you Jen?
I am Jen.
Okay, great. Thank you.
District Five, Jenniferia. At the end of May, the CDC published a large-scale study of COVID transmission in American schools. The study published by the CDC covered more than 90,000 elementary-age students in 169 Georgia schools from November 16th to December 11th and was, according to the CDC, the first of its kind to compare COVID-19 incidents in schools with mitigation measures in place to other schools without those measures. The study found that social distancing, hybrid models, classroom barriers, and most notably forced student masking were each found to not have a statistically significant benefit. In other words, those measures cannot be called effective by admission of the CDC's published study. Outside of the U.S., these findings are not controversial. The U.K., Ireland, all of Scandinavia, France, the Netherlands, Switzerland, and Italy, they've all exempted kids from wearing masks at school. They've had no more outbreaks in schools in those countries than the U.S., where the majority of kids wore masks for an entire year.
Time. Our next speaker is Lisa Vale. Lisa Vale and Denise, Denise Piffkey, I believe.
Did you say Denise?
I said Lisa Vale and then Denise. And Denise, you're our last speaker. Thank you.
Is it on? Yes. Okay, great. Hi, my name is Lisa Vale. I recently moved to Tennessee as well. As you can see, I'm wearing a mask. Honestly, I don't know if it works or not. I decided to wear one because I'm at a higher risk group, and as an adult, I assess the danger and I react accordingly. That's called critical thinking, and that's what you should be teaching our children. I don't see any reason to mask my daughter. She is not in a risk group, and that should be my decision, not yours.
Our next speaker. Our final speaker is Denise Piff-- Denise. Will you please pronounce your last name for us?
Yes, it's Piffkey.
Okay. Please go ahead. Please go ahead.
I'm a grandmother, and I've watched so many of these meetings worldwide, and I see your dead eyes as you're looking at me through your mask, and that's always what the meetings are for, because you're not listening to anyone. You already have your minds made up, but our children are falling behind. They're not reading. 80% of our children aren't reading to grade level because they have to worry about their mask. Teacher, science teachers are cowards. If you took those masks off at the end of the day and you did a basic pathogen swab, you would find the most disgusting things, and you see children with staph, MRSA, strep on their faces, up their noses, herpes in their brains, because it mitigates up into their brain. This is unbelievable that parental consent, parental choice, is not even discussed, is not even taken into consideration.
Time. Thank you.
Shame on you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment. We will take a five-minute break now, and then we will resume the meeting at 6:44.
Candy, Jay, thank y'all. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
You had your vote two weeks ago, the governor issued an executive order requiring an opt-out if a district requires masks. And so your vote two weeks ago requiring it at the elementary level is overlaid with the governor's opt-out, and that is in place through September 21 pursuant to your vote. Also, I want to let you know that as of Friday, we increased our mitigation strategies with a goal towards limiting ourselves to essential activities. Some examples of those that you may have seen effective this Monday was limiting lunch crowds, decreasing volunteers in the building to essential, limiting indoor gatherings and focusing on outdoor gatherings. And we continue to work on those mitigation strategies when they come up. In addition to that, we also have included letters to parents warning of a possible close contact based on reported cases. As an interim notice, the head of the Health Department, contact tracing, that they are responsible for, and we continue to work to refine those letters. And I want to tell you, last year, even with the pandemic, we had a lot of success. One key is that we were able to quickly shift grade levels, schools, and occasionally, rarely, the district to remote learning when there is a need. We did that on a limited basis, only after careful thoughtful consideration through those continuous learning plans that you heard so much about last year that we submitted to the State Department of Education. Last year, even with all our mitigation strategies, we had that need from place to place and from time to time on those occasions. And we learned last week that from time to time and from place to place, we may have that need again. As recent as yesterday afternoon, superintendents were told by the Commissioner of Education that shifting to remote through the CLPs was not available this year without the governor declaring a state of emergency that included school operations. Late yesterday, there was some information published that indicates we may have some flexibility with individual schools. We're working on getting some clarification on that, but right now, there is still no indication that districts might go fully remote, even with that information that came out late today, without it counting as one of our stockpiled inclement weather days. So more specifically, on Friday, we reached a point with staffing that we just flat could not staff a school building. And as a result of that, we used one stockpile day for one school. And we had, at the time, 17 staff members out for COVID, and of course, we had some other absences as well. We just hit a point where we couldn't do it. My preference in our experience is, and we've talked about this regularly, having students learning is better than having them not, you know, taking an inclement weather day. So based on this, as a result of you all asking for a meeting, we have developed a proposed resolution asking the governor for that step that will make this tool available to us. And I want to emphasize to all of you that this is only a tool that we use after careful consideration. This is not something we want to use regularly. But what we have learned is, even with the mitigation strategies that we had in place last year, with the universal masking that was at about a 96% to 97% usage rate, in that range over the course of the school year, with the social distancing that we could manage in the buildings, even with all that, there were those moments at individual schools where we needed to make the change, and we were able to do that. Second, one important mitigation strategy that we talked about when we opened school, and we mentioned it again two weeks ago, and we've talked about it even in the most recent regular meeting, was that basic statement of stay home if you're sick. And we know that we have our family support on that. We ask for continued support from our families on staying home when you're sick. We take care of students when they're out sick. That's something that schools have been doing for a long time, and over time, schools have gotten better at that. We now have more tools for that. You all are familiar with Schoology, where students can get their assignments straight. The old tradition, a generation ago, was pick up your books from school and get your assignments. Now you can get them online. We make sure that students can complete their work if they miss a day. And so now, more than ever, we need our parents' help on that basic strategy of stay home when you're sick. As we were preparing for this meeting, we had conversations with teachers, with some of you as individuals, with our community, and the WCEA leadership told us that they had heard from some teachers who either don't have sick days or were afraid for their sick days. And what we are asking of you as a second request tonight is to vote for a proposed policy that allows for COVID leave. Now, as a quick reminder, last year, really in 2020, the federal government had specific COVID leave for large employers. We had a policy in place. At the end of this year, that policy went away. We have a proposal to allow for teachers and staff members who are sick with COVID to get those COVID days so that their regular sick days are still available to them as another tool to make sure we take care of our staff when they are out sick. So with that, Madam Chair, I wanted to let you all know that we have done some work based on that majority request, and we have those two specific requests that we believe have the potential to help us do a better job, knowing that we are currently in that pandemic.
We have a question on the floor from Mr. Wimberly.
Actually, I guess it's kind of a point-of-order question. It seems like we're going to need a motion on both of these things, correct, in order to discuss them?
Yes, Mr. Wimberly. We would need a second, we would need two separate motions. And as a reminder, board members, under Policy 1.600, we would be asking to waive second reading on the COVID sick leave policy, so this could go into effect immediately.
Well, would it be appropriate for me to move that we pass the resolution?
Yes.
Then I do so.
Mr. Wimberly makes the motion. Ms. Cleveland makes the second. Is there any discussion? I see no discussion. Oh, Mr. Galbraith?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Am I on?
Yes.
I guess we got this. I appreciate you providing this for us, Jason. As we talked, and I just wanted to get your opinion on the potential changes that I would like to make on this. And I don't know if you got a chance to look at it, but I did want, I guess my concern is that it's, that this is kind of an open policy. I know this is just a, I know this is just a resolution to request for the state, but it's been typical that we don't send those resolutions unless we get 100% of the board to agree. I guess my take on this, and you just tell me if we're in agreement, is that you would only invoke this policy, or invoke a remote policy. I guess, I'm sorry, Dana, would it be appropriate? We haven't read any, we haven't read the motion or the proposed policy. It's up on the board, but would it be appropriate for somebody to read this?
It can be right into the record, yes.
Okay. Whoever made the motion, would that be appropriate, Rick, to do that?
I believe Ms. Glenn usually reads it, is that correct?
That's fine.
With Salisbury?
Yes. A resolution by the Williamson County Board of Education. Whereas the Williamson County Board of Education, Board, is duly elected governmental body responsible for providing a public education to the students and families of Williamson County, Tennessee, and whereas the Board recognizes that COVID-19 cases have greatly increased in Williamson County in the past few weeks, and whereas the Board recognizes that the COVID-19 surge has led to staffing absences which force the use of a stockpile day at a WCS middle school, and whereas the Board recognizes that continued strain from COVID-19 could force future use of stockpile days, and whereas the Board believes that the option of remote instruction through our continuous learning plans, CLPs, would help mitigate the strain from increased COVID-19 cases, and whereas the Board believes that WCS uses the option of remotely learning wisely, proven by continued leadership on state testing, and whereas the Board believes that having students learning remotely when needed is more valuable than no instruction. Now therefore be it resolved, the Williamson County Board of Education urges Governor Lee to include school operations in the Tennessee State of Emergency to allow school districts to shift to remote instruction if necessary to address the impact of COVID-19 on schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glenn.
May I? Thanks. So I guess, Jason, can you tell me, this seems to talk about our, the reason for a potential shutdown is largely due to staffing issues, but is that your intent? And has that been your practice last year when we had this capability? I'm thinking about the lack of staffing versus some measure of students being present to warrant us being remote or not, school by school.
Yeah, I think you stated that accurately. Largely, it was a staffing issue. There were a few times where the volume of students, that student absence has reached a point where we determined students would, that the students as a whole would be better off in a short window of time in remote when there were so many absences. If you have a mix of students remote and a mix on campus, you go through the course of a school day, certain class periods, depending on how it's being taught, could be very different. So by far, what we've seen these first few weeks is a staffing issue. We have had student absences up to one-third. I think the lowest we've seen so far is about a 66% total attendance rate at one school. And I will tell you also, we've seen the opposite end of the spectrum, where we're in the 90s in a different spot. What we learned from last year, and we're already seeing quickly this year, is that's likely to fluctuate from location to location across the district.
Okay, so it's largely staffing, but can you, I know there's been some conflicting statements from state officials regarding what we're allowed to do right now with regard to remote learning. So can, it's my understanding that right now, any student at home with a COVID-related absence, so that's either isolation or quarantine or self-quarantine, is available to get remote instruction?
There is a new rule this year that states that a student who is out, to your point, with COVID, a COVID-related absence, can participate remotely with school and have that counted as a present day. So that is available for students currently.
And, but is it universally available to students, or is it available to students for certain classes or certain, is it still, like last year, is it still teacher preference on whether they want to, whether it's a class that warrants being taught remotely?
Well, the state rule for this year was designed to make sure that a student could get counted as present. That was the key point. So as I understand, it wasn't differentiating particular classes, it was just designed to make sure that a student could be counted as present. Back under the CLPs last year, if a particular district's plan allowed for it and the CLP was approved, it could be approved. But the state this year structured a particular rule to allow for that particular possibility for a student.
Okay, so maybe very specifically, if a student is, if a student is home and wishes to participate, are we 100% allowing that student to participate in class and be counted as present?
Yes, any class that the student can participate in, yes. Now, if you think about the course of a student's entire schedule, there may be a PE class, you know, where there's not a good remote function. There may be a test where they might not be on Zoom, but they're taking the test. But yes, that is available for all students.
So it's available, but with some limitations?
Yes, to your point, Mr. Galbraith, there are limitations. The state board rule, in fact, it's for grades 1 through 12. It has to be a six-and-a-half-hour instruction. And remember, this is so the child would be counted as present.
Right.
There are some additional examples of confirming attendance, and the district for each child would have to confirm at least two of approximately five. And board members, you are going to be seeing this in policy September 7 to deal with quarantine. So this is specifically for students. When quarantine or isolation, there will be a policy specifically so that our students can be counted as present. So I know we'll get into more detail at the policy meeting, just know that that is coming.
Okay. That makes sense. I'll save my remaining comments for later. Thank you.
Mr. Wimberly?
Thank you. I hadn't anticipated this question, but I guess I'm a little bit confused. So what we're trying to do is get permission to be able to close, and first, let me make sure this is correct, a school, a class, or a grade level, like we did last year.
To shift a school, a class, or a grade level to remote instruction. So not be on campus, but shift to remote.
But the point that Mr. Galbraith brought up is that currently now, students who are out for, is it any reason?
COVID.
Just COVID, can participate in class learning. So if there are 10 people out, basically, they can learn remotely.
If there are 10 people out, basically, they could learn remotely with the rest of their peers and the teachers who are on campus. So that's the, kind of the opposite side of what we're talking about.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that, Mr. Galbraith. Actually, I snuck my other question into that one, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The continuous learning plan, are we going back to the one we had last year? Are there any altercations to that?
Mr. Cash, what we're asking for in this particular item is related to us being able to go remote. I will tell you that we will honor any current board votes and, you know, the orders of the governor related to anything that might have changed from last year.
Right, but I guess the question I have, you just explained that any kid that is sick or goes out, and we know attendance is up, of course, people are being very cautious sending their kids to school, but any child is able to go remote right now?
So...
I guess my point is, is why are we putting a resolution out there if we're already able to do it?
So number one, for clarification, this is about, the question Mr. Galbraith asked was about individual students who are out for COVID being able to participate when school is on campus, but they can participate remotely and be counted as present. So that's one item. The item that we're talking about is those times where, because we have such a struggle with staffing that we just can't flat staff a school, when we can't get enough substitutes based on the number of faculty and staff who are out, and we reach a point where we can't be on campus. So those are two different issues.
Well, I just kind of fear that we have the, you know, the right to just start shutting schools down again.
Well, thank you for that. I will tell you, I'm sorry.
No clapping, please.
With, no, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing in the resolution that states as guidelines or whatever for that case. I understand that staffing is an issue, and it takes a whole lot less staff getting sick to shut the school down than it does students. I understand that. But I'd like to see a little bit more guidelines in this, because I don't want it to open up like last year, where we've had, where if one kid is, a child is COVID, has COVID, and 40 kids go out with them. I just don't want to see that, because what did we end up when we finally got the Health Department to tell us what they thought on how many kids that were quarantined actually got the virus? We were around 1% and maybe two.
Yeah.
And we can't have that happen again. There was too many kids, especially high schoolers, that missed out on so much because of quarantining the way we were doing it.
Thank you for that. What we know right now is, we don't want to shut down schools either. What we had to do last week with one school for one day was use an inclement weather day, stockpile day, one of our 10, and shut down that school for that day. What we are asking is, in those moments when that happens, for the governor to give us back that authority to shift to remote so that students can learn that day rather than it being a full shutdown. And to your question about the frequency of the number of quarantines, I am very open. In the event the governor gives us this authority, and this is an ask, right? That's what this is, that's what this proposed resolution is. In the event the governor gives the board authority, I am very open to this board talking about parameters by which we use this. The quarantine numbers from the Health Department, that's a different story, and we can talk about that. But whether that happens and we end up going remote, if the governor gives us that permission, or that happens and we have to use a stockpile day, you know, my request is, ask the governor to give you all and us the authority to shift to remote if we have to, as opposed to send students home without instruction.
All right, one other question. If this goes through, does this, do we go back to asynchronous days?
We don't have any proposal to return to asynchronous days.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Supria?
When Fairview Middle School had to close last week, were the students with disabilities in that group able to come on campus? Or is that something that can be accomplished if we're able to switch to remote?
Thank you for the question. That was a closed day. Students had not received services. It was as part of our, teachers did not work, students did not go to school. What we were able to do last year with those days, if we could go remote, is we maximized student support services and made sure that the students who needed services in the building were there. So if we're going fully remote, there are still a small number of students who are getting services in the building based on their IEPs.
Okay, and does it seem like this year, because last year, to Dan's point, there were a lot of students that were being quarantined. And this year, the CDC guidelines have changed to say that if both parties have a mask on, they don't have to be contact traced and quarantined, or at the high school and middle school level, if anyone 12 and up has access to the vaccine and they're vaccinated, they don't have to be quarantined. So it seems like it's more specific to the staffing issue this year. So it seems like it's more specific to the staffing issue this year versus last year, where it was kind of like when we have flu and you have to look at the whole percentage of the school population. Do you feel like this year it's going to be more just based on staff, and we may end up going remote less often?
I don't know. What I can tell you is, what drove this after three weeks is staffing. I would like to ask Mr. Anderson to speak to your question about quarantine. From what I have seen with our numbers, the indication we see these first three weeks is, it looks like quarantine is not nearly as extensive as it was last year. But we have student absences sometimes, and we don't know the whys. And so it's possible there could be some numbers based on the conversation between the Health Department and families outside of our knowledge that we can't quantify. So, Mr. Anderson, is there anything you can add to that?
Sure. The numbers that are out of school can either be for an isolation where they do have COVID, or quarantine, or self-quarantine, or just for some other reason. And we don't know the totals, other than the fact of who has exactly been sent out of school for isolation, meaning they have a positive COVID case. We cannot differentiate between all the others, because we don't get that information from the students or the parents when they're out, or from the Health Department if they are quarantined. We don't see that information at this time, because they are directly contacting the families and the parents on that.
So sometimes a parent will tell us, sometimes they may not. So we don't have clean, definable numbers on the number of quarantines.
Okay. So the only reason I'm asking is I feel like, I feel like it's a good thing to have this as a tool in our tool belt for when we need it, because it does serve a really good purpose in allowing, when we really need to go remote, because it's not just based on student quarantine numbers, which should be a lot less this year. It's based on staffing issues, and it means that instead of sending them home to do literally nothing, we're giving them an opportunity to continue their learning in a timely manner and allow the students that need support services to still come on campus and distance. So I support the resolution, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Ms. Durham?
So the resolution, can you clarify something for me about this? Because it states that we want the governor to basically declare a state of emergency around school operations, and that would give us, implies that it gives us the authority to shut down the whole district. Whereas if it's accurate, my interpretation of our current authority is that we can shut down schools on a school-by-school basis or individual basis, based on Penny Schwinn's feedback? And so we already have the ability to shut a school down at our, and go to remote learning? Yeah. So I thought it says that we can shift to remote learning, as long as it's a single, you know, focused on one school or one person. We just can't do it district-wide. Am I misinterpreting what we're allowed to do versus what we're asking?
We have seen reports of what you just stated. We have not received anything in writing from the Department of Education related to that. So that is what we are working on, working on clarification of that question of, could we shift an individual school to remote instruction based on need? And so that was what I was addressing when I said, you know, as of yesterday afternoon, we were told that we do not have that authority to shift to remote, to apply our CLPs. But late in the evening, there was that quote from Commissioner Schwinn. So is it possible? I think they're working on it. I really do believe they're working on it, that we may hear something in the next few days where we have that authority, but I don't know. And so what we are asking of you is to continue that ask, that we have started ourselves with this resolution.
So just to clarify again, that we, if we wanted to close Fairview High School tomorrow, because we didn't have enough students, we could not let Fairview High School be remote?
Right now, we have no instructions from the state that we have that power to have a remote day without it counting. We have heard that verbal communication that you're referencing from the news sources. That's what we are checking on. And so to put a little extra detail, superintendents are asking ourselves the same question you asked. Do we have that authority?
And Ms. Durham, if I may, I think what you are looking at is State Board Rule 0520-01-17-03, utilization of the CLP. For this school year, there are several conditions that would have to occur before we could implement an approved CLP. The governor or the designee would have to declare a state of emergency or disaster via executive order or proclamation, or by the activation of the Tennessee Emergency Management Plan. That has not occurred, other than one county, and I am looking at that right now, Humphreys, through Executive Order Number 85. So we're asking that we not have to wait for that state of emergency. And there's some other, in this particular rule, that you're, regulation that you're referencing, there are other conditions. And at this point, none of those, other than for that one county, have been activated by Governor Lee. We're asking him to let the board do that, just like we did last year with the CLP that was approved by the Tennessee Department of Education.
Thank you, Dana. So then, okay, then just to clarify, if we approve this, then, and he declares a state of emergency around school operations in accordance with the resolution, it gives us the ability to do that and to clarify on our operational side, then we wouldn't be doing that to shut a whole district down, but only if there were, I think to Jen's point, a staffing issue? Would we be able to, at some point, to put some parameters around when that would be allowed, or?
Yes, and I will refer you all back to last year. From time to time, all of you were involved in conversations about particular schools. We're going to be very thoughtful and very careful. We don't want to do this. And we talked about this a lot last year, and I'm convinced that one of the reasons, again, that we succeeded was because we did our best to minimize that. And I'm proud of what we did last year. It takes a lot of work, and not every district went through that, you know, that struggle that we went through last year from time to time. We're going to be, in the event we are given this authority, we're going to be very careful with it and only do it when we absolutely need to.
Okay. Mr. Welch?
Thank you. Jason, I'm going to rehash a couple of things here, but I just want to make sure that I've got it kind of down right. First, I just want to go through the timeline here and confirm that I'm accurate on all of this. So one of the big triggers for this was Thursday, Fairview Middle being out, and we had 30, what, about 30% of staff that was sick that day.
That's right.
We were unable to staff classrooms, and so you were forced to cancel classes. I think you said previously, you know, around 10% out, you would consider closing a school, but just with COVID and everything else, the effort to keep kids in schools, we've gone above and beyond. In this case, you actually went down to 30%. I've even heard, in some cases, some of our bus drivers have even been working as substitutes. They bring kids to the school and then substitute teach, and then drive them back home. In some cases, we're that strapped in some situations for one time. Then, yesterday or Tuesday, doesn't matter, earlier this week, you and Superintendent Snowden issued a joint letter to our legislative delegation asking for their support and urging the governor and State Board of Education to give us back the tools that we had last year, the online learning. I saw in the paper that both Representative Ogles and Senator Johnson supported this and had sent emails in support to the commissioner, those were quoted that way, to allow us that authority. I didn't see a thing on Representative Whitson, but I know he's always extremely supportive of our school system. Then yesterday, the governor and commissioner held a joint press conference, and they said there was no plans to do that currently. A few hours later, there were quotes in the media from the Commission of Education indicating that we would have that authority, but we did not receive anything in writing, and to date, we do not have anything in writing. Have I missed anything? Is that, is that accurate, kind of laying out that timeline?
To my knowledge, it's accurate. I will say, I haven't seen the emails from Representative Ogles or Senator Johnson, but our letter, Dr. Snowden's letter and my letter, our joint letter, was to our elected legislators, and they, and those two did say that they would share that with the governor. Also, the 10% absence, that is a trigger point historically for us to have conversations about why, what can we do? Are there any issues? And we, you know, to your point, we did drop well below that. We have one other school that we just got a notice on, that we have structured, so every time we drop below, we have one school who today was at 18% absence, and again, it triggered that conversation.
Certainly, thank you. And without having that in writing, as a local elected body, we really need to make policies and procedures off of established law. We can't go off of, well, we saw a quote in the media that says we can, so we're going to do that. So without having that emergency declaration for the governor, without being told from the Commission of Education or the State Board of Education, or some authoritative body at the state, that authority that we previously had, that we used very well, we do not have it currently this year.
We are looking for some written confirmation, and the evening discussion is encouraging to me. You know, and might we get there? It's possible. Like I said, it's quite obvious that they're talking about our request.
Absolutely. No, I get that. I just make one, we do not have it in hand yet. It does not exist. Talking's talking and doing's doing, to put it in a more colloquial term. I want to shift over to the resolution itself, and here I'm going to rehash some things. I think there've been a lot of different conversations, but I want to make sure I understand everything. So first and foremost, this resolution, it has no impact on the decision process of whether school is in session or not.
That's correct.
Okay. If we get to a point where we can't staff classrooms and we have to cancel class, we're going to do that, whether we have these tools or whether we don't have these tools. This is simply saying that if we are forced to cancel schools, which we do not want to do, which we're going to try everything not to do, we will be able to continue to teach kids, as opposed to having them home watching TV or playing video games or whatever else, childcare.
To shift to remote if needed, rather than closing a school and using an inclement weather stockpile day, yes.
This resolution also has no impact on quarantine operations. How those decisions are made, how long you have to quarantine, anything else. Whether, from the perspective of whether a child goes into quarantine or not, or a teacher goes into it or not, this has no impact on those decisions either.
That's correct.
Okay. If we, if we have to cancel a school, or a grade, or a class, again, that teacher is, continues to be paid, correct?
Our teachers are on a 200-day contract, and the inclement weather days are still part of their salary.
Mm-hmm.
If we do, if we, we have those 10 days built in our calendar to use.
Right.
I think that answers your question.
It does. It's, we're not penalizing the teacher through no fault of their own, saying that you're not going to get your salary for a day, or if we have to do it longer, two days, you know, in this case.
That's right. But let me add this, just for clarity purposes. If we do a remote instructional day, and it counts as a stockpile day, does not count as an instructional day, and we run out and have to make up the days after school, either, well, spring break, summer break, something like that, we would still owe teachers, because we would be asking them to work extra days.
Jumping ahead to bullet point number five that I've got for you, but I appreciate that. The software that we use to conduct online learning, if we were able to do it, the operational process, the timing, when, you know, the scheduling, all of those logistics, this resolution does not impact that at all. We will still be able to have all of those discussions. We can bring forward what we used last year, or we can do different things. What this resolution is simply asking for is give us the authority to have that online learning if we need it.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Without this, if we have the law stat, I think, I think it's worth saying again, without this authority, if we have to cancel school, there's no instruction. The, we also have to use the 10 inclement weather days, which we also have to use for inclement weather currently under this process, correct?
Absent the governor declaring the emergency covering the schools, or the commissioner, to your point earlier, confirming that we have some limited, some limited authority, yes.
Okay. And if we go, if we use all of those days, and it's not necessarily that we use all of those days for a sickness, if we use five of them and then have six snow days, we have to then extend the school year, whether that's into summer break, or spring break, or something else. But with the, it is currently, the law is currently for our system, we have to add that additional day on.
That's correct. And actually, our calendar that's on the website has at the bottom of it, that you all voted on, a list of preferred days in the event we have to do extra.
Okay. If we have that additional day, we have to pay our staff for that additional day, that they're working, obviously?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have the money budgeted to pay for staff for additional days that are not currently on the calendar?
No.
Okay. And then, if I may ask a question, staff salaries, benefits, what have you, I believe it currently makes up, what, about 75% of our budget? 80? Okay. So we're talking about the portion of our budget that we will have to make up. Not all of it, obviously, but 80% of the budget, the lion's share by far, which we do not have funds for. So I assume we will have to go back to our county commission and ask the taxpayers for more money in that case.
Excuse me. Who was that, please? No, I heard somebody speak out. Let's, you know that the rule of being here is to not talk during this discussion. Thank you. Deputy, can you please move that for me? Deputy, can you please move that big sign? Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you. So we will have to pay staff. We don't have the money. And so since we are not a body that has taxing authority ourselves, we will have to ask our county commission for more funds, which the taxpayers will have to pay for. But if we do have the ability to do this online, we can have that instructional day still, even if it's not in person. It's not ideal. It's not what we want. But certainly, some instruction is better than no instruction, and we could count that as an instructional day and not need the additional funds, not need to extend the school year. Is that an accurate understanding, or have I missed something?
Well, on the budget side, every year, we must budget with a Well, on the budget side, every year, we must budget with a 3% fund balance for possibilities. And so, if something happened where we needed additional expenditures, as we sit here in August of a July budget year, if a budget hit, the likelihood is we would use fund balance, which then would reduce the fund balance for next year's budget. On the, on the, on the instructional side of your question, having a remote instructional day during the school year is, to me, more valuable than having a day at the tail end of the school year in the summer.
Yeah.
It's going to be more instructional valuable, instructionally valuable now than if it happens to be pushed to the summer.
Excellent point, absolutely. It's instructional day after, we've taken TCAPs, after finals have been done, everything else. And let's be honest, it's a check the box. It's
It's compliance. If we have to have a summer day, it's, a lot of it's compliance.
Okay. Thank you. That's, those are all the questions I have.
Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Golden, I think I heard this earlier. I just want to clarify for my notes. Last year, we went remote based upon a decision to go to remote, whether it was a class, or a grade, or a school. It was based upon absence in the, in the school, correct? Whether that be student or, or staff?
Yes. I will tell you, looking back, and Mr. Anderson may be able to fill in, early on, there, I think there may have been once or twice where we had conversations with the Health Department, and, and there was a recommendation. But that, that didn't happen, I don't believe, at all in the second semester.
Yeah, I don't remember us doing too much district-wide remote learning. Most of our remote learning was kind of micro-focused within a specific school or community, if I remember.
That's right.
Correctly. And last year, we believe, and I think Mr. Anderson pointed this out, that, that we had a lot of absences based upon quarantines, and due to contact tracing. I think that was a lot of the driver of our absences. Was that, is that a fair statement?
That's accurate, yes.
And so far this year, we've only really had to close one school. Now, granted, we've only been in for a few weeks, but we've only had to close one school for illness, and that was due to staff absences, I guess. Or we closed the school due to staff absences. And, and, but we don't know if those absences were due to illness or self-quarantine or not. And, and so my question around that is, is that something we're trying to track, Mr. Anderson, given, given?
If I may, I can answer that.
Okay.
We actually do know COVID-related, well, staff in isolation with a confirmed positive case. And we published that on our website. So, as an example, right now, August 24th, as of August 24th, Fairview Middle showed 17 faculty and staff out for isolation with positive COVID test.
Okay. Though, though not necessarily sick with it, just, well, I guess they had tested positive.
Tested positive.
Okay, fair enough. If we had had the right to, or had the authority in the, to do remote learning for Fairview Middle, would we have been able to execute that, given the amount of staff that was out?
Yes. And let me tell you why. In the days leading up to it, we had significant staffing problems, and we found teams to go there and help fill in those gaps and keep it open.
Becomes a team-type effort, as opposed to individual class.
That's right. Friday, Friday was a tipping point where we could, just couldn't do it anymore.
Okay. So, where I'm going with this, I guess, is to, back to your point, that the value of the, of the instruction is really more, is greater in line in the semester than it is kind of added on at the end. So, can I request, I guess, that the staff between now and maybe our September meeting, research strategies to run remote learning for schools, or classes, or grade, grade-level outages, even though we may not get a day of credit from the state for that. And I reckon, and so I'm, my point around the, looking at the strategies, I recognize there's a lot of logistics. I recognize we've got teacher contracts, we've got staff contracts. And again, that was also to my point, that if I'm closing, if I'm closing a grade level because of staff shortages, will I have sufficient staff to run a remote learning? But the point being is that if we believe, whether we get, I guess, from my standpoint, the more important thing is to do the instruction than necessarily to check the state box for credit on the day of, day of class. So, that would be my, my point, regardless of whether we've got the authority to do it for credit. I don't think there's anything, and again, this is part of the research that I would think Ms. Osbrooks could do. I don't think there would be anything prohibiting us legally, short of contracts, that staff contracts, that would keep us from being able to run remote learning for the students that wanted to participate on a, on a shutdown day. And so that's kind of where I'm.
I think I know what you're asking. One example would be, what would be the perdiem cost of doing that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and just whether we, whether, whether our teachers' contract, you know, I guess, how would we manage that? But the point being, instead of, because the challenge with just shutting it down is there's no instruction going on, and there's nothing, and, and so, can we continue? It's better to do remote learning than no learning in that case, is my thought there. And I'm looking for strategies to try to find middle-of-the-road things that, that address both our, you know, we're looking at, talking about mitigation strategies here, that that's what I'm looking for. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Galbraith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Jason, if this were last year, and we had Fairview Middle School closing for a day, and Bethesda closing for a day for a non-COVID-related issue, I guess last year, our, your, your policy was really, if, I know specifically, if the district moved to remote, you were giving a day of, of buffer to, to allow us to transition from, from in-person to remote. If you ever made a district-wide decision, would you do the same thing on a, on a school-by-school basis? Would you give that day of, would you give those teachers, that school, a day of, of buffer?
What we would do would be, if we knew this was in our toolbox, prepare for that possibility. And especially as we progressed over the course of last school year, we got more adept at it, and we were able to quickly transition. I will say, on the Bethesda example, just to make sure everybody understands that detail, the water tower that served the Bethesda community a couple of mornings ago was empty. It may have been yesterday. I've lost track. And, and there was no water in the building. Toilets wouldn't work, kitchens wouldn't work. We could not have children on campus for an entire day because there was no water. In that case, shift to remote, we would have to do a little bit more planning, because that would include questions about serving students with disabilities on campus. Some of our teachers actually, on remote days, go to campus and work from their classroom while their students are remote. So, there's some, there's some issues like that. For, for those unusual times, other than the COVID, it would take a little bit more planning.
So, it's the same, I guess, the water tower issue is the same rationale that we, that we used when we had a couple of snow days last year, and when it was still, still to, the weather was, was, and the roads were bad enough that you didn't think that it was safe for even the staff that needed to come on to do remote, or, and the students to come on. So, we, we had, even though we said we were going to maybe have some flexibility, we really didn't use that to its fullest. So, we just, we just had the snow days because we had them in our stockpile.
Yes. True snow days are a lot more difficult because some students are traveling by bus in a, in a COVID day. We also, because of accessibility, internet accessibility, we always had a very small number of students on campus last year at schools when they were remote, so that the students would have that internet access. So, very spread out, you know, very small numbers. But those are factors that, in a traditional true snow day, we would not, we would have a harder time with.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, given, given that, you've already sent this to the Governor, and through our legislators, having those discussions, there's, there's lots up in the air. There's obviously discussions that are going around. You know, I, I would rather, I would rather just wait and get some more clarity on, on this, on this issue, because if we, I'd rather, if, I'd rather go into more detail on it, because if we, if we, once, if this authority does get pushed down to us, then I'd like to talk about it in policy, and talk about the parameters that we would want to place on this, so it's not just a carte blanche. We can, we can close down anytime you say. I'd like to kind of narrow the, narrow the focus. And then, I would like, I certainly don't want to do this, given that, given that the quarantine issue was why, it wasn't necessarily COVID cases, but number of staff and students in quarantine last year that drove our decisions. I'd like to do it after we have a chance to talk about the quarantine policy that Ms. Osbrooks said that we were going to, to talk about. So, I don't, I just hate, I hate making a resolution like this when we're, we're flying blind, and, and we don't know, we don't exactly know what the, what the state is thinking right now. We could, we could say this resolution, and they could come and, and say, oh, we already talked about this, and no, or they could agree with us before they even, before we even send it to them. So, that's my, I just, I'm, I'm a no, unless somebody can admit to be otherwise.
Well, I will tell you, the threshold we have as an answer is district-wide. We've seen no indication that it's a yes district-wide, but we have some indication that there's the, they're talking about the possibility, school by school.
Right, that's fair.
Mr. Fiskus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Golden, Jay's questions earlier about quarantined students currently having access to remote learning, I've gotten, that reminded me of some questions I've gotten this week. Can you explain that? How does that happen if a family, you know, is, is self-quarantining? How are they identifying to their teachers and so on, to be able to access that?
Well, first, the call comes from the parent to the school. And then, at that point, I would like to defer to either Dr. Webb or Dr. Oyer, to just give the boots-on-the-ground explanation of what a, what a principal does at that point. I know I just, I left it to the choice between the two of you. Dr. Oyer?
It's on.
It's not.
It's not.
Let's try again.
Hello. Hi. Thank you for the question. It certainly looks a little bit different at both level, or at all three levels in the grade bands, but the communication happens with the teacher. They're aware that the student is, is absent. They can engage in Zooming into the classroom, or they can engage in some of the, the activities, or, you know, the, the classic packet that happens, that is picked up by the parent, and they do that work. So, there's a variety of ways that they can engage. They can even have a phone call with the teacher. Any of those things will allow the student to be counted present if they're in the quarantine. I don't want to speak for middle and high. I'll let Dr. Webb do that. But the communication happens with the classroom teacher, and any of the people involved, the special teacher, a student support service teacher. And we engage in providing those services if they're to be counted present, or move into the classroom via Zoom, or doing things at home that would allow them to be present, connected to the curriculum that's being covered in the class that day.
The only thing that I would add is not much varies at the secondary level, other than our use of Schoology. So, many of our teachers already have preloaded content on our Schoology side, our learning management system. Engagement within Schoology also would, would count as engagement and curriculum for that day, depending on what the lesson is, and also could result in that student being marked present. Some families have asked, in the most recent days, how quickly that attendance will be changed. In some cases, it's immediately, and in others, it would be at the end of the quarantine. It just depends on the process within that individual school. But our expectation as a district is that by the end of that quarantine, any of those days where the students engaged in instruction, by the end of that quarantine, their, their transition of present would be changed into their attendance.
And so, just for clarity, so that it's not necessarily requires synchronous education, where they're on a Zoom call, listening into a class. It could be asynchronous through Schoology?
That's correct. It really depends on what's being taught on that particular day. It could be engaging and completing an online assessment, as an example, if that's what their peers are engaged in, and it can be transferable to an online platform.
So, if it's a Socratic lecture at a particular high school course, it makes sense to participate directly. If they're working on an assignment individually, it might not make that same sense.
And if I may, if I may add, elementary schools are also using Schoology now, and so that's another, another platform, if they're not Zooming in, that teachers are referencing. The work is there. They can access that work. It's new, so it's a, you know, it's a, we're not all the way there yet, but that's a new tool in the elementary school teacher's toolbox as well, and students.
Mr. Wimberly?
Madam Chair, I'd like to call the question.
Question has been called. This does require a second.
Mr. Mitchell seconds it?
There is no debate. We move straight to a vote. If we can have a roll call vote, Ms. Glenn.
Dan Cash. Elliot Mitchell.
Yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Yes.
Jenna Priya.
Yes.
Jake Albreth.
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Yes.
Candy Emerson.
Yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Yes.
Eric Welch.
Yes.
Casey Hall.
Yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Yes.
Your vote is one no, 11 yes.
Okay, so the, the motion on, on the floor is to approve the resolution by the Williamson County Board of Education that we have just discussed, to assist us with the staffing absences. Board members, please cast your votes.
Your vote is nine yes, three no.
Thank you. The motion does pass. On to our next topic, Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had, I had presented my, my thoughts for you. I know this is a special call meeting. We have two items on the agenda. I have made my recommendations, and so I would defer to you as Board Chair on, on where to go from here. The next item I have a request on is the proposed policy. In the event the Board chooses to make a motion, I would like to defer to Ms. Osbrooks on, on the nature of policy in our Policy Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Board members, as we discussed earlier this evening pursuant to Williamson County School Board Policy 1.600, staff would recommend approval of the proposed COVID-19 sick leave policy with one reading. If that is the will of the Board, there would need to be a motion to adopt this policy within one reading, and then we would also need to vote on the policy itself.
Mr. Hall makes the motion. Mr. Hall makes the motion to approve. Is there a second? Mr. Mitchell makes the second. Is there any discussion? And Ms. Glenn, I think this is another item that we might want to have read into the record.
Not the policy.
So, point of order, Mr. Hall, your motion was to suspend the, the policy and have it on a single reading. Is that, that's, that was the motion I was seconding. Just want to make sure.
Thank you for the clarification.
And, and Mr. Hall, Mr. Elliot, Mr. Mitchell, we would not need to suspend policy. We would just need to follow Policy 1.600 for an expedited policy.
Thank you, Ms. Osbrooks.
Thank you, Ms. Osbrooks.
Point of order, Ms. Osbrooks, do you think we need to read this one into the record as well?
Not unless board members are, are requesting. The, the motion before you is to allow the COVID sick leave policy to be enacted on one reading and waive the second reading. That's what you would be voting on.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, point of order.
Does that approve it?
No, sir, there would be a second vote to approve, or not approve.
Thank you.
Ms. Osbrooks, will you please read the motion on the floor again?
To allow COVID sick leave policy 5.3051 to be approved on first reading.
Okay. Board members, I see no discussion, please cast your votes.
Your vote is 12 yes, zero no.
Thank you. Ms. Osbrooks, I'm going to ask you to read this out, just to make sure we get this completely correct.
Sure. So, board members, what will be before you now will be, would be COVID-19 sick leave. This is a new proposed policy, 5.3051. For the 2021-2022 school year, all teachers and full-time employees will be granted up to 10 days of paid leave to be utilized if they are required to remain out of work due to a confirmed diagnosis of COVID-19 with a positive PCR test result or a healthcare provider note with diagnosis. The conditions stated above are the only conditions that qualify for COVID sick leave. This policy is effective as of August 2nd, 2021, and expires on May 31, 2022. That's the proposed policy that is before you.
Do you have a motion to approve?
The move.
Mr. Mitchell makes the motion, do we have a second? Mr. Hall, Ms. Apria.
Do we need to add language for teachers that have to quarantine based on close contact, or would they not qualify for sick leave?
We are, we are not recommending that for quarantine. We are recommending that for, we are recommending this for COVID sick leave. And it's based in part on what you talked about, about the nature of quarantine this year.
So, the teachers could potentially teach remotely and still be counted as present if they were in quarantine.
Ms. Hall, if you would, speak to that.
Thank you. No, they would not still teach remotely. If they, because I, I have discussed this with our healthcare professionals here that, that we're, that are advising the district. And with the quarantine situation now, individuals who are close contact are permitted to go to work if they are wearing a mask, and it's recommended that they wear a mask for 14 days and potentially longer if it's an in-house, close contact. But, so that, that is the reason for not including quarantine, one, one of the reasons.
So, our, our quarantine policy for staff is that if they are close contact, they can continue to come to school as long as they wear a mask for 14 days after the contact.
The Health Department sets the quarantine rules, and so Ms. Hall was speaking to the Health Department's quarantine rules. If, if someone is wearing a mask, if, if you would, Ms. Hall, speak to that, or perhaps, perhaps if, if there's a potential, we might miss it. I just want to make sure we're very specific on that. And, and our conclusion on the human resources side is that if, if a, if one of our professionals is subject to quarantine, there's, there's no need for this policy because the exceptions to quarantine are such that our, that if somebody's out sick, we want to give them sick leave, as opposed to if they're not out sick, there's no need for COVID-19 sick leave. So, Ms. Hall, I don't know if you need to restate that.
That's basically correct. We're not seeing quarantining where a, an employee is being advised to not come to work. The, the information that I have is if they are a close contact, they can wear a mask and return to work. So, and the policy decision was made for those individuals, those employees who are actually becoming ill with COVID, and this would provide them some leave other than just having to use their own sick leave.
So, I definitely agree that we should give teachers the 10 days of sick leave, but I, I personally feel, based on CDC guidelines and other experts, that we should allow teachers who are designated as a close contact, whether or not they're positive at the time, to have, I mean, what happens currently if a teacher is a close contact? We're, we're telling them to come to work then, and just wear a mask?
That's, that's my understanding, but I might.
So, what we're talking about here is right now, any teacher who chooses to self-quarantine, even if they're, even if they're masked, even if they've been vaccinated, they can use regular sick leave. The need that we're discussing here is, we want to add an overlay of an additional benefit for those who are positive. There are some who've been vaccinated who, who, who test positive, there are some who've been unvaccinated who test positive. Our goal here is to add an additional benefit for those who are positive. Those who, who have other issues, as it's, as it stands right now with our request, they can use their regular sick leave.
Okay, that's, that's putting it differently, and I, I think I understand what you're saying. You're not encouraging them to come to, to work even if they are a close contact and just wear a mask. You're saying you're going to have to use your own sick leave because you didn't have a mask on, or you, you're now a close contact, and so it encourages them to take some steps to protect themselves from that quarantine.
Well, we're not offering this extra as a way to encourage that, we're offering that for those who are sick, to make sure that we give them that little bit extra. For, but I understand what you're saying, but our drive was in, after having conversations with, with, you know, with, with some of our WCA leaders, we concluded that if somebody's sick with COVID, we need to give them COVID leave and not have to count.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's, that's where we are.
My, my only concern is that if there is a teacher who is a close contact that should be home quarantining to protect the students and, and staff in the building, they may not if they are not going to have, pay for that, or they're going to have to use their own sick days. So, I don't know.
I, I understand what you're saying. My understanding, and y'all, if, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is, a quarantine decision is between individuals in the Health Department. If the Health Department says you need to quarantine, you need to quarantine. And, and there may be some times where somebody does use sick leave to quarantine. What we're talking about is that extra for somebody who does have COVID, to make sure we give them that, that additional benefit.
Can I, can I make an amendment, Dana?
You can, yes.
I, I move to amend it to include anyone who is required to quarantine, who's a close As defined by the Health Department? I would rather it be as defined by knowing that they're a close contact.
There, there's an amendment on the floor. Is there a second?
All second.
Mr. Mitchell seconds. I have the speakers for the original motion. Mr. Galbraith would be first, Mr. Wimberly would be second, and Mr. Mitchell would be third, but does anyone want to speak to the amendment?
I can speak through it. Do I speak through it first, or? Yeah?
We need to see first if any of the speakers who are.
Okay.
Signed up to speak wish to speak to the amendment, only the amendment.
I would like to speak after, if we can, will we keep these?
We keep this order if you're speaking to the amendment.
And first, if she, it's her amendment, so she should be able to speak first.
Okay, so, basically, I, I am just concerned that if our goal is to keep kids and staff on campus and healthy and protected as best we can, then we need to use all the different layers of mitigation, and one of them is contact tracing and quarantine, which we all know by now, I think Gary, you can confirm this, has, has anyone in any of our schools been contacted by the Health Department yet?
We know some people have been contacted by the Health Department that were the original cases. As far as the quarantine cases, we don't, we don't know of any individuals.
Okay, so, to me, I feel like we should allow, if a teacher is in a staff room and they're eating lunch with another teacher, and there's a potential close contact there, and they should quarantine based on the science, then I think we should allow that teacher to take the time to quarantine and make sure they're not positive in spreading it in the classroom so that they can have sick leave and, and do the right thing. So, that's, that's why I am moving this amendment.
Mr. Wimberly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What is staff's recommendation on the amendment? Is this amendment necessary? Does it really accomplish anything? Is that, I mean, don't they already get sick leave?
Well, that, that is, that was our thinking while we did not include it. That sick leave is available, we wanted to add this additional for, for, for actually being ill. I, I understand and appreciate your amendment. I would like to ask Ms. Hall to answer the substance of your question as to what impact this might have.
Yes, and I do thank you for asking that question, because last year, we processed over 3,500 COVID leaves, or over 1,500 staff used COVID leave last year, and a lot of that was quarantine. And so, while I do understand the concerns there, I really do, and I've, I've talked to a great extent with Ms. Thompson about that, about the quarantine process. We do, the guidelines are saying if, you know, if you're masked, if you're vaccinated, you can come to work with a mask on, if you've been a close contact. That coupled with the fact that we are struggling to staff with the illness, if we also provide leave for individuals who are quarantined, that's going to exacerbate our staffing issues. So, that, that is my recommendation, after, after talking with Ms. Thompson and others, and looking at the, you know, the, the potential cost benefit of offering the leave, we thought that the best way to provide our employees who are, you know, putting themselves at somewhat greater risk is to provide them with some additional sick leave if they become ill with COVID, but to leave it at that, and not to include the other examples of leave eligibility that we had last year.
Did the WCEA weigh in on the proposed policy change?
Mr. Wimberly, they brought the issue to us, and, and so ultimately, they, they weighed in on their thoughts. And it's tough for me to speak to them because we always have very detailed conversations, but the essence of their, their leadership's conversation with us was, will you consider finding a way to bump up the, those, those benefits? And this is, this is where we landed.
Did they, did they ask for basically the same thing that Ms. Apria is asking for?
I can't recall that they asked about that, they identified the concern for us. And so, I can't, I can't answer that question. I don't think we had that specific a discussion about, about that kind of detail that I can recall. I, I will tell you, my, my experience with, with them is, they're all about students and all about finding ways to, to do right by those who serve students. So, there are times where, where, as an example, we'll say, hey, we're thinking about increasing, you know, blank pay, for, you know, common sense purposes, they'll say yes. In, in my experience, if we're talking about finding ways to give more, generally speaking, they will say yes, but they're also very practical.
Is it appropriate to ask them? Are they not here?
My recommendation.
I guess that's a question to the, to Dana.
I, well, this is my recommendation at a, at a special call board meeting. I think you have a motion on the floor with, with an amendment. My recommendation is vote on it as, as is, and we're not done. We're going to continue to talk, we don't know what the future holds, and, and in the event we have other recommendations, we'll bring them to you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Hall, let me clarify, I thought, and maybe Mr. Anderson can weigh in on this too, I thought the recommendations was if you are vaccinated and you had close contact, then a mask would be sufficient. Is that, is, are we saying that, that?
Mr. Mitchell, please talk into your microphone.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at Mrs. Hall and talk to her, but, fair enough. So, my, my understanding was that the policy, what, if you were, if you had close contact and you're vaccinated, then wearing a mask over 10 days would be sufficient. Are we saying that if we have somebody that is non-vaccinated, if we have staff that is non-vaccinated and they have close contact, and it's, that we believe that a mask is all that they need to do to come into a classroom?
If, if I could please, Mr. Mitchell, and with the permission of the Chair, I, I believe Ms. Thompson can answer these questions about quarantining and what the restrictions are, and the, the recommendations that are coming from the Health Department.
And thank you, Ms. Hall, that's, that's the essence of what I was going to say. The question, as I understand it, is related to what are the Health Department's standards for quarantine, and, and the, the specific examples that you asked. So, I, I would ask either Mr. Anderson or Ms. Thompson, whoever, whoever's been studying the, that detail of the Health Department's work.
So, the Health Department, quarantine and isolation, as it stands right now, comes across as recommendations and guidance. So, when quarantine and isolation information is, comes from the Health Department, it's delivered in a form, basically, they receive it in a text message, they will get instructions, it's not the same as the way they got it last year with a date telling them when they needed to be out. So, that same thing would apply for staff. So, right now, staff are up to the point where they're having to decide whether or not they need to self-quarantine based on the information that they've learned. And so, when we have looked at what makes sense for these individuals for staffing, thinking about the first key thing, and this is kind of the same thing with the students, is sickness. So, if somebody has any symptoms, they can't come to work, they can't go to school. The symptoms is the key, and then the mask is the secondary layer. Of course, we know vaccinated individuals that have been exposed are not subject to quarantine, and since we can't ask a staff member their vaccination status, we concluded that the individuals that are stating they're self-quarantining because not, they're not under the order of federal quarantine orders, are able to define whether or not they have sickness. If they're not sick, we're asking them to wear a mask for a duration of time, and that, of course, we're still encouraging and educating people about seeking vaccination questions being answered by their healthcare provider.
So, can I ask for a clarification? That the comment, the, the text, the text message that you referred to would be coming from the Health Department on close contact, is that, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, yes. So, we've actually not had this happen, but this has been in discussion with other school districts. So, how they're handling this now is, once they receive the positive case information from us, they're able to verify a lab result, and they're able to have, interview the case, then they determine the close contacts. If they have the close contact information, the information is delivered for quarantining via a text message from the regional Health Department.
So, my, my thought here would be that I'm supportive of Ms. Apria's concern and, and point that if you have a staff member. that if you have a staff member who has received a text message from the Health Department, or has received communication from the Health Department, that they have been identified as a close contact to a positive case, then, and I would surely, we would expect students to do the same, we, I would think that we would want our, our staff to do the same as well. So I'm, I'm supportive of this motion to give our staff the encouragement that if they have, if they're not vaccinated in particular, and have been, and have been exposed or have been notified of a close contact, that they ought to be able to protect their students and the rest of their peers from additional exposure, and not suffer the cost of loss of sick leave. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Galbraith.
Thank you. If, if I understand Ms. Apria's motion, it, it wasn't necessarily, I guess she, you changed the, you didn't say quarantine by the Health Department, you said quarantine or close contact, right? So, so Mr. Mitchell, right, that, that wouldn't be necessarily what, what she's, what she's asking. I don't think, I just want to make sure everybody's clear. Is that, no-
Yeah, just to clarify that. The reason I removed the Health Department part was because I know they're very backlogged, and they're not getting to the people that they need to in time. So I would want any, any teacher who, or aide who's working with a student, and they're in direct contact, and they need to quarantine, to be able to do that without having to use up all their sick days. Another case where this would work is if a teacher has children at home, and they're in school, and they're close contact, they've become positive, and the teacher then has to stay home as a close contact to their child, they're going to have to use sick days up to do that as well. But this would cover that if they're a close contact, they would have sick pay out of the COVID leave. So it covers more teachers and allows them the flexibility to stay home when they need to stay home, to protect the students in the classroom and the staff.
Actually, more sympathetic to that, to that issue than, than to, than to broaden the definition of, of close contact in the classroom and, and go over and above. I feel, I feel like it's going to have the impact of, of having fewer teachers in the classroom than, than we do now, or than we potentially, than we do under the current, current rules. Chair.
Ms. Apria.
On the bright side-
No.
Sorry, sir. So I guess, sorry, Jen, I would have let you talk, but I get it, I get the Roberts Rule's orders. So I, I mean, I'm really, I'm really conflicted on this, because I've, it's, it's not where, they do have sick leave that they can, that they can use. Parents always, as a, as a teacher or staff, if their kid is sick, or if their kid has to, has to stay home, they're always at the, at the mercy of that for regular sick time to, to have to take off for, for sick leave. I, I'm supportive, I'm totally supportive of the, of the, of this as is. I want to talk about it a little bit. I'm struggling with the amendment, though. I, I'm really, I, I don't know, I want to, I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks about it, because it, it, my, my number one goal is to, is to have teachers present, and if I'm hearing Ms. Hall and Mandy, the, if a, if a teacher has, has been, if a teacher is ever symptomatic, then they can't come to, come to school. I guess I would, I would almost look to, to add to that. If they're, if they're in close, if they've been in close contact and they're symptomatic, then, then I would be, I'd be more likely to, to be able to support it, but yeah, request to speak and then talk later, thank you.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you. I, I think we're mixing two different topics here, or perhaps I'm misunderstanding, but it, that's what it seems like, kind of the conversation has, has drifted here. One of these conversations, we are talking about providing additional sick days to teachers. And those additional sick days are to teachers that have a confirmed positive case of COVID. And now we are talking about expanding those additional sick days to a close contact. That's issue number one, that, you know, this amendment is about. The second issue here that I think we've gotten sort of sidetracked a little bit about is what is the quarantine process? And do we agree with it or not? How should it work? What is the impact of it? I think that's a very valid discussion. I think this is, if we want to have that discussion, if we want to make changes, this is the night to have it and to do that. But this is not the item to have it on, because it is separate. Going back, and I want to make sure that, that I understand how we're dealing with something here. Again, with a close contact, if you have a mask on, the teacher is wearing a mask, they do not go into quarantine. If there is a close contact and the teacher is vaccinated, they do not go into quarantine in that case, correct? Okay, seeing, seeing the head nod, so, yes, okay.
Two masked individuals.
Okay, got it. This amendment would not change that. We're not talking about changing the way we have handled quarantines for close contact with this amendment. What we are is simply providing those additional days to it. And we would be providing them solely to an unvaccinated teacher in this case, because a vaccinated teacher would not qualify for the quarantine. Is that correct?
Unless they're symptomatic.
Symptomatic.
Okay, symptomatic, yes, and obviously that's something different.
And then they'd switch to being a case, so then they'd qualify.
Okay.
Or just, just for, for completion purposes, if they did not have a positive, it'd be regular sick leave.
Okay. So we offered vaccinations to every teacher in our district at no charge. We provided the clinic, we brought them there. At the same time, we have all given all the teachers the opportunity to not do it, if that is their choice. But I think what we're talking about here is rewarding someone who has chosen not to get vaccinated with the potential for 10 additional sick days, because they have chosen to not get something that everything has shown makes you less likely to get sick. And so if that is your individual choice to not get vaccinated, we have said that is fine, allow that, but I don't think we should be rewarding that behavior with additional sick days, that we would not give to a teacher who is vaccinated, who we would, we would require to come to work.
Mr. Wimberly.
I think I'd like to respond to Mr. Welch's last comment, and that is that some teachers can't be vaccinated. The other is that this seems to give teachers additional flexibility to take care of kids. That said, I have to ask the question. Couldn't we defer this until September? This aspect of it? Would you consider withdrawing? I mean, because the last thing Mr. Golden said when I first questioned him was, we're not finished yet. And it just seems like, you know, this is, conceptually seems like a good idea to me. But it, it just, I think we've got some more questions, and, you know, I think we ought to give staff a chance to mull it over, we need a chance to mull it over. And, you know, debate it in a work, or discuss it in a work session, and then, you know, vote on it in our next meeting, because there's nothing stopping us from, from doing that. And, you know, the truth is, as things progress, we're going to be looking at COVID mitigation measures almost every time we get together. So that would be my, my question, and I guess, can I make a request that, that she withdraw, withdraw all the motion?
Mr. Wimberly, you can. What you could also do is move to postpone the matter to a date certain. And what I heard you say was September.
So if, if I may-
Unless we have another meeting between now and September, which-
If I may, just to make sure we're, we're clear, would, are you talking about, would this, would this be a move, move the entire motion and the amendment to a date certain, or just the amendment?
I took it as just the amendment.
In my mind, just the amendment. I think we should vote on the, on the, on, as it was presented to staff tonight.
And that, to your point, Mr. Wimberly, could be accomplished one of two ways, with you making a motion to postpone to a date certain, or if Ms. Apria, and I believe it was Mr. Mitchell with a second, withdrew the amendment, and we would move forward with the motion. Either of those would accomplish what you're asking.
I have two other speakers.
Well, before we do that, I guess I'd-
So I have to decide that right this minute?
Somebody's going to make a move.
I think I would, I, I make a motion that we defer this until our next meeting.
Defer the amendment?
Defer the amendment to the September meeting, is that your motion? There, there needs to be a second?
Yes, unless there's a-
Mr. Welch. Seconds.
Can I ask a question about that?
You can.
If we defer it-
Just a minute.
No problem. Okay, if we defer it, and then later decide, maybe we do it then, but would, could we make it retroactive?
If I may answer that question from, from, from the, from the leadership side, this particular policy is, it starts August 2nd. So there is, there is a request to, to make it retroactive. And our, we had that discussion with our payroll folks to, to do that review in the event this passes.
So yes, to answer your question, yes, you could do that.
So there's a motion in a second, it is debatable, if you want to debate it.
This is a debatable motion, Ms. Cleveland?
The only question I have is, I don't know if it's really on the motion, it's on our last amendment, is, it's very subjective, or, from what I understand, because the Health Department is not issuing the quarantines, it's going to be on your honor. You self-quarantine, so anyone, staff or anybody can self-quarantine and use these days and get paid for, is that correct? It's an on your honor?
And so, Ms. Cleveland, I probably should have been a little more clear. What we're discussing now is, is the motion to postpone, not, not the amendment.
I have no comment.
I see no further discussion on the motion to postpone. Board members, please cast your votes.
We would need to do this unless you have it up. Okay.
Recommend approval of the motion to postpone the amendment to the September board meeting. Your vote is 10 yes, 2 no?
Now we're back on the original motion. Is there any discussion? Mr. Galbraith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there, is there a reason why, why the definition of, of a, of a confirmed diagnosis is, is different than what we're using for every other? This is a, this is a new definition for us, if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly. A positive PCR test or a healthcare provider note with diagnosis, is there, is there a reason for that?
We, we did discuss that. I'm going to give you the gist with a request for Ms. Hall to clarify. There, we don't know what all's out there, and so that's the, that's the gist of it. So if you could put it in some more professional terms.
Thank you. These are the two methods of providing an affirmative, an affirmative positive test or a professionally diagnosed case of COVID-19, are the two that are mentioned here in the policy.
Okay. I'm, I'm actually, I'm actually fine with it. I just want to, I just want to make sure as we, as we discuss this further in, at policy with, with quarantine and at our future mitigation strategies, that we start to, that we, that we be consistent when we're defining what a, what a positive case is, because we're getting, we're, we're counting self-reported, if I'm not, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, we're, we're counting self-reported. What, I guess, what does a student have to do, Mandy, to report a positive test today?
They can do an over-the-counter test, they can do a walk-in clinic test. There's varying degrees of tests. They don't tell us if it's an antigen test or a PCR test.
But they have to, they, they provide, they provide a, a picture or, or a copy of the, of the, of the test result?
They do to attendance in order to be excused for that length of time, that is proof, and then the nurse reviews it.
Okay.
But we provide it to attendance as part of the record that confirms that they had a positive test.
But, but we, but we don't, we don't allow a healthcare provider note with the diagnosis?
No, we, we allow that too for excuse data.
Yes, oh, sorry, yes.
Okay, but it, but it's, we're, we're specific here as saying PCR, but from a, from a, from a student standpoint, and right now, probably from a staff standpoint, do they have the same, the staff and students have the same burden as far as it'll, it can be an antigen test, or a at-home test, or a PCR test?
So part of the level with this is that this is in line with what the Health Department has done for a confirmed positive. An antigen test without review by a healthcare provider or the Health Department is actually a probable case.
Okay.
So this is a confirmed positive case.
And, and a probable case would also be close contact with, with symptoms, but, but no test would also be a probable case, that's not a confirmed COVID case?
So, yes, so in this situation, if a parent, so if a child was positive for COVID, the parent developed symptoms, the parent went to see the healthcare provider, the healthcare provider could say, yes, due to your child's positive case, you have a confirmed case of COVID based on symptoms.
Gotcha. Like I said, I'm, I'm fine with this definition. I think it's, I think it's, it's, I'd like to see us, review, if you, if you could, just review, review this in light of our current, our current procedures for, for defining a positive test, and see, and I'd like to make them, see if y'all make sense to make them the same, but thank you.
Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I'm reading this, it talks about will be granted up to 10 days of paid leave if they're out of work due to a confirmed diagnosis. Is this per confirmed diagnosis, or is this 10 days basically for the school year?
Per confirmed diagnosis.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
This would actually be for the whole, for this school year. It would be 10 days, so, I'm sorry.
So, so as I read it, to, to hit the theory of what you're saying, if someone had two positives over the course of the year, they would get the, they would get the COVID leave twice.
That's how I read it.
That's how I read it, that's, that's the, that's the standard for that.
Board members, I see no other discussion. We're back to the original motion. Could you please cast your votes? Pardon?
This is to, this is to approve the policy.
Yes, this is to approve the policy.
Thank you.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no?
Thank you, board members. Board, is there any other business before this board tonight? Ms. Apria?
Yeah, I had been speaking to a few people on staff about the current mitigations and how we can go about adding layers, and I know the one thing that isn't operational that requires a board vote is the mask requirements. And due to the fact that our main goal is to keep kids on campus and to keep our students and staff safe and protected, I would- and staff safe and protected, I would like to move to extend the motion that we made two weeks ago for all grades K through 12.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Mr. Mitchell makes a second?
Ms. Garrett, if we could have Ms. Glenn read the motion from two weeks ago, just so everyone knows what that is.
To require masks for students, staff, and visitors at the elementary grade levels in all buildings and buses effective Thursday, August 12, 2021, and to end on Tuesday, September 21, 2021, at 11:59 PM. Teachers who are safely distanced at least six feet may remove their mask. Exemptions from the 2020, 2021 will be grandfathered and allow staff and students to exempt with the same set of exemptions, religion and health.
And board members, if I, if I may, since that motion was passed, there is also the executive order number 84, which would overlay over this motion.
Can I speak to it? Okay. So, just, you know, allowing with the opt-out that the governor has required, we've noticed in the elementary levels that only about 27% have opted out, which means that we now have a majority of our students and staff in the buildings wearing a mask and protecting one another, and also acknowledging that the quarantine guidelines say that if two people, both people, the positive and the contact are wearing a mask, then they don't have to quarantine. So that allows for more students and staff to stay on campus if we extend that up to this middle school and high school. Also acknowledging the fact that in sixth grade, there are plenty of 11-year-olds who don't have access to a vaccine, and so we want to make sure that they have that opportunity to be protected until that's available to them as well. So, I, I've heard from so many families and parents that would just really, kind of expect us to put this layer of mitigation in place because it is so highly recommended by the, by the CDC and everyone else, that everyone in K-12 buildings is wearing a mask.
Ms. Cleveland?
I'm pretty much going to stick to what we originally agreed, we're elementary school. I don't believe that, I'm not convinced that universal masking is something we need to do at this point. And I'm glad we're discussing the mitigation strategies, but like Ms. Apria said, that as of the 23rd, that over 25% of elementary students opted out wearing a mask. And personally apparent, it's apparent to me that to try to, we can't mandate 100% students to wear a mask. We can't mandate the older students to get vaccinated. And so, what we can do though, is to look at the number of positive cases within each class or school and act accordingly. So right now, like Fairview, that happening, but we've got schools that we don't have big outbreaks. I know my, my district, it's not an issue right now. And it's not saying it isn't, but I would rather see it going by school by school versus just doing a knee-jerk reaction, universal masking. I really think, that's why I really believe in pushing the remote learning, because our job is to keep the kids educated, and by remote learning, this gives us the option. But at this, and that's why I want to push the online remote. And I understand your concern about universal masking, but I, I just can't do it right now. I'd just like to stand what we originally agreed on.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes, I'd like to know staff's recommendation on this.
Traditionally, I wait till the debate is, is over. I will tell you a couple of thoughts I have, since the question was asked. One, we know the discussion we had before the governor's order, and we made, made that recommendation because there was the belief at that time, we could largely mask those students who did not have access to the vaccine. Since that time, the governor's order is overlaid, and, and it's optional, the question is whether it's, it's optional based on filling, filling out the, the request form and us having a record, or it's optional just based on not doing it. The net result for me is either way, on the practical level, it's optional. We have about three and a half weeks until the elementary requirement ends. That will give us some data, if, you know, about, about, about how many secondary parents and students, you know, respond to that request. I do know that early on in those first few days, the estimate at the high school level was masking at about 10% or so, Dr. Webb, is that my, is that, that pretty accurate? And so to Ms. Apria's point, the elementary school jumped from 27 to 75, that's where we are right now, about 75%. I would, I would like to ask our health professionals, as, as we sit here ultimately, on our, on our recommendation.
If you're asking for a recommendation on fully, on full masks, one of the issues that the COVID team has had is identifying if someone is wearing a mask, not wearing a mask, if they got it, if they didn't get it from that, if they have, if it's an adult who had a vaccination or not had a vaccination, and did they have on, on masks or not. One of the concerns we have is, we cannot identify enough to tell you that it would be what you would be asking it to be, and that is to be 100% with having a mask mandate. We don't see that as any possibility of it being 100%. And one of the things of the masks, when the opt-outs are allowed, it takes it away as a mitigation strategy and makes it a mitigating factor instead. So it doesn't have the same impetus that it would have without those opt-outs. So basically, our recommendation is, if, we can't see that, we can't prove now it has the impact because we don't have enough data to show you that so-and-so had a mask, so-and-so didn't have a mask, we just don't have enough data to tell you what the overall impact would be.
So as I understand that, this motion has the potential to give us more data. It would give us data on perhaps human behavior questions of, if, if the board said this is important enough to us to mandate it and ask you to, to, to opt out, could that make a difference? And could we tie that data in three and a half weeks to our positive cases? In, in that case, I certainly respect that. Because we don't know what the, what we might get, there could be some, could be some value in that. What, what I want to emphasize to you is, ultimately, what I asked you for to help us get to the point where we have that option, no matter where we are, is, is key to me. With, with three, with three weeks, three and a half weeks of that, given where you all were and where you debated, you know, two weeks ago, my recommendation would be vote your conscience. From a parent, from a parent choice perspective, I do know from our experience with elementary that those who wanted to make that choice were respected and made that choice. So, and honored the governor's order. So, so ultimately, kind of on the premature side, where I'm at is, given what you all have worked through over, over these two weeks, my, my recommendation is you vote your conscience and vote your thoughts for where we go these next three weeks on that secondary.
So, I guess, just, just to clarify, so you're, you're kind of ambivalent towards the, towards that, you're not, you're not recommending that we, that we mandate masks for, for K through 12 or pre-K through 12? So you're, you're fine either way?
We haven't recommended it up to this point, right? I would-
And you're not recommending it now?
I, I recommend that you all take all the information that we've given you and, and vote as you deem appropriate. And I know, I know you're smiling about that, but you asked me to make a recommendation when there's four, where there's four people, you know, sitting, sitting to speak. And you all know, we did not come to you with this recommendation, but I respect it, and I can see that there's some value in it.
That's fine. So, I guess I'd like to ask Ms. Sawyer, with the, with the current elementary school mask mandate with the opt-out provisions, do, I guess, are teachers able to, to effectively know which, which students in their class have, have man, have opt-outs and not? And it seems, this is anecdotal evidence, based on people's comments of, it's all got to be third, it's second and third hand because they're, they're taking the, the recollections of their six-year-olds of what's happening in their class. But it seems like more people are, are not wearing their masks than, than have opt-outs, and it might be stricter, more strictly enforced at some schools rather than others. And so can you, I just want to know how are, how are we, how are we policing it? Is it, is it by school mostly, or by classroom even?
Thank you for the question. I would say it's both. So certainly, teachers have the awareness of who has the mandates. My observation in classrooms is that there are some classrooms that there are more students who don't have on masks, that's accurate. But the, I also have observed teachers asking students to put their masks on, wear them appropriately. The principals, probably in some of our schools where there's a more significant percentage, might not be able to tell you by memory exactly who doesn't have them, but, but there are questions and conversations that are happening with those students, so that there's, there's that awareness as best they can. As the administrators, the management of it is happening best in our classrooms, because teachers have a smaller group of students and they know student X, Y, and Z have an opt-out form for whatever reason, and the others are expected to wear their masks and wear them correctly.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I guess I would, I'm not in favor of, of mandating the masks. I think it's ultimately going to just create more, more administrative hassle and confusion at the end of the day. These older kids versus the, versus the smaller ones are going to, are going to exercise their, their ability to make up their own minds, and I don't think most of the, most of the staff is going to challenge people by and large on whether or not they're wearing a mask because they have the option to opt out, so, thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what I'm looking for is a clarification, K to 12-year-old or K to 12-grade level? Okay, thank you. It was 12th grade is what-
Is that all, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what we're talking about is a mandate that's not really a mandate, right? I mean, the governor has said there's an opt-out, so the folks who don't want a mask mandate, don't want us to require your kids to wear masks, that option doesn't sound like it's going away. There are a lot of people who aren't at school board meetings, who have communicated to the board, that are looking for some leadership from us, and looking for us to follow CDC guidelines as we did last year. And right now, that guidance is that kids should wear masks, people should wear masks even if they're vaccinated. The situation continues to be concerning. And I'm one who, you know, I think, listening to the medical professionals, but still acknowledging that, that the mask is not the end-all, be-all, it's not a silver bullet for this. On a list of five mitigation strategies, I think the top three are vaccination, ventilation in the rooms, which I understand we've done a very good job on, and then, and then the masks are this other layer in the Swiss cheese model of imperfect mitigation strategies. And just as an aside, I mean, here we are, August 26, we're well into the school year, and the state has not given us the guidance on what rules to follow. And from changing course on the, or giving the guidance on the opt-out midway through the month, unclear guidance on whether we can go remote, maybe we should pass a resolution reminding them that school starts at the beginning of August. And, and it would be helpful to get some of that guidance from the state. And I understand the frustration of the community, and a lot of that is shared by us, is we're getting frustration with this getting passed down, and we're at the end of the road here. We're, we're in the cul-de-sac of having to make these decisions here because the guidance, the metrics have been lacking. And that's, that's a frustrating situation for everyone to be in, but it's where we find ourselves. And I guess, to me, do we want to listen to the politicians, or do we want to listen to the medical professionals? And, and I'm leaning towards the medical professionals with this, and understanding that this is an imperfect situation, you know, an imperfect solution to a very difficult situation.
Thank you, Mr. Cash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last time I heard, masks, masks were optional. That's from the state government, that's from the governor. That is guidance. Last time I heard, vaccinations were up to the person. There's choices. How long are we going to beat this dead horse to death? I was wondering when this meeting, when this was going to come up, and why we had to have a special call meeting with this short of notice, which I will say, Mr. Wimberly's right, because there is so much mitigation to talk about, that we, we couldn't even get on the agenda for tonight because it was so short notice. We talk about people emailing, medical advice, I've said it, I said it a year ago, I'll say it again, data, data, data. Anything you want to hear. There's good stuff about masks, there's bad stuff about masks. Who do we listen to? What do we listen to? How about the parents who are sending their kids, sending their kids, sending their kids to school, and, and caring for them and loving them? Why do we have to continue this? You know, there's, one gentleman came up and said, there's one mask, a medical N95 mask used by nurses, that is possibly the only one that's safe. All these folks talking about us killing their kids because there's no mask on somebody, and they've got a rag over these children's faces, if we do it, let's do it right. Let's order everybody an N95 mask, including everybody in this room and this whole school system, and let the school system pay for it. But this is ridiculous, coming in every, at the special call meeting, everybody gets all hyper. When does it quit? You know, the, the elementary schools, you're probably seeing more and more masks. If you just, if you just stop this madness and this worrying, COVID's here, it's going to be here for a long time. We're not going to get over this next week or next year. If this variant doesn't go away, or if it does go away, there'll be another one in its place. It's just like the common cold, folks, it's just, it just hurts us a little bit worse. Hopefully, we'll get better at this.
No, no applause. Mr. Wimberly?
And I, I do have a request, because I'm getting carried away, and I get angry at listening constantly about this putting masks, masks, and doing this and doing that. These kids, these kids are happy going to school. And I hate to say it, but you know what, let's, let's, Jason, if, if we could, really look at the online, because we're never going to satisfy some people, and we've got to give them an out. If they don't want to send their kid to school and be with another kid that doesn't have a mask on, or does have a mask on, or whatever the situation is, then give them an out and let them put their kids in online training or whatever. That's, thank you.
Mr. Wimberly?
I have nothing.
Mr. Welch?
So I would hope after the clown show last week that we-
So I would hope after the clown show last week that we could ratchet down on the rhetoric a little bit. No one is talking about putting a rag on kids. What we're talking about here is putting a face mask on them, first of all. And what we saw a week ago was an embarrassment, and we should not be encouraging that. Whatever opinions we have is fine. I think we should be able to disagree without being disagreeable. To scream and holler about these and beat a dead horse, I agree, is an embarrassment. It's not your turn to speak, Dan.
Folks?
So.
What is the point of order? What's the point of order?
I never brought up last week. I never, so I don't want to be blamed for that.
No one's blamed for that.
Okay? I don't condone, I don't condone what happened.
Madam Chair, I think I've been recognized.
I'm asking our attorney to assist here.
At this point, you're right, Mr. Welch.
Thank you. So again, we shouldn't be ramping up the rhetoric on this. We can disagree. The community disagrees. We've seen that. We've seen that very clearly. This statement about listen to the parents, what that typically means is listen to the parents that agree with my point of view. Our parents are split. The community is split. We have seen very valid arguments on both sides. There are people who have argued against it and have talked about the impact on their children, and it is valid. Children have one opportunity to go through school, and it should be as normal as possible as we can make it for them. That is valid. It should be considered and honored. There are also parents who have emailed us and have talked about their immunocompromised children, challenges to them, and that is valid. And to debase their arguments with comments about living in fear, we'll go just learn online then, or putting a rag in front of their face, is disrespectful to them. They are talking about their children as well, and their opinion should also be respected. The opinion of anyone who comes here, regardless of what it is, acts like an adult, doesn't scream and holler and yell profanities, deserves respect. They deserve to have their argument listened to and considered. And if we come to a different conclusion, it doesn't mean that they weren't listened to. It just means that we came to a different conclusion. I don't want to cross the state and church line here, but I'm going to reference something that's sort of been on my mind. It was from a sermon a couple months ago, and it was two comments that really stuck with me. And the first one was talking about running a marathon. I've never run it. I didn't have the knees for it from soccer wrestling anymore, but apparently, when a marathon, you get to a point where you hit the wall. I think we've all heard of that. And when you hit the wall, you've got to change your strategy. You can't continue on with the same thing that's worked up to that point, whether it's slowing down or eating something or whatever it is. Whatever got you to that point and has worked will not work going forward. It's the same for us here. And it's the same for both sides. This is not an argument for one way or another when we talk about having to change our strategy. What we did in 2019 is not going to work for '21. What we did for 2020 is not going to work for '21. We have to look at what the current information is. We have to look at the data. Data is not a bad thing. And yes, you can find whatever you want. I can find out that the earth is flat if I want by Googling it and find some pseudoscience expert to back me up, but it ain't flat. We need to get our data from real experts. The other thing I'm going to say is anyone who says that they know definitively is lying or incorrect. We don't know for sure. No one knows. We can take educated, we can create educated hypotheses from what we know, what we've seen, what we've learned, but we don't know the long-term effects of this on the kids. And again, that goes both ways. We don't know the long-term effects of what we've done from our mitigation strategies. Is the cure more harmful than the disease? That's a valid question. But we've gotten so dug in as a community with this. We've gotten so rigid on these things. I'm going to go back to our resolution that we had today on the online learning. And I don't care how you voted on it. If you voted conscious, great, I respect that. But I am going to talk about kind of the criticism that led up to it, not here, but a lot of the outside, the criticism on it, against it. It was instantly wrong. The board had proposed it. I don't like online learning based upon it. There wasn't a pause to go, hey, let me learn about this and ask, because all the criticism that we received on it really wasn't what it was about. And we're seeing the same thing with these masks. It's become an issue where it's not about the kids. And that goes for both sides, those for it and those against it. There are definitely those segments where it is now about the adult, it is about my self-identification, it is about representing something else. We had those two idiots out in the parking lot last night, or last week, who didn't even have kids in the system. The second thing, going back, that's really stuck with me about the referencing of this It was this reference to, we're all tired of COVID. We are all tired of it. And I think the reopening summer has made it more difficult because going through all the struggles, we now got a taste of freedom, and it was great. We saw friends and families again. We got to go to concerts, there were movies, traveled again. It was awesome. And now we're seeing it drift, and we've got to go back. It's like being a Tennessee football fan. It sucks, but it should be good. We remember when it was good, and that's what we want it to be. We want it to be good, but boy, it sucks right now. And there's this, a lot of us are, you know, asking these questions of, why God? Why? Let it be over. You know, of course, we know it moves in his time, but the suggestion, and again, I'm not trying to cross the church and state line here, but the question of why not is maybe there's something that we need to learn from this first, we as a community, as a nation, as a world. Maybe there's a lesson that we need to figure out. And I look at what happened a week ago. I look at some of this stuff tonight. And it makes me awfully hard to say, we as a people have learned that lesson, all of us. This is not pointing the finger at one side or the other. All of us have bad actors on it. Vote however you want, but vote for the kids and not the adults in this. And if you do that, your conscience should be clear. Mine will be. The final point I want to make, and I see you wrapping me up, Nancy, sorry, is I would ask everyone to consider this question. What if I'm wrong? What if whatever I think is wrong? And I don't want you to ask that, think about that in the sense of them over there, that other side, that other tribe, people who disagree with you. What if they're wrong? Think about it of what if you are wrong in your position. Say, it's one thing that I struggle with in moments of isolation all the time of, you know, there is a data overload. You pull it in, you make all the decision, you go down the thing, but gosh darn it, what if I'm wrong and what is the impact? So consider that and do that cost-benefit analysis with it. Because we don't know what it's going to be, we can only make the best educated decisions and guesses and act in the interest of children. We're going to have to live with risk, but we've got to mitigate the risk and just try to do what you think is best. Thank you. Sorry for rambling on.
Ms. Priya?
So I just wanted to address the point about opening up online and going back to that. A lot of our students that are high-risk were online the full year last year, and when we were forced to make a decision about what to do with our kids this coming year, back in March, we were told that we would follow the CDC guidelines. And so many of our families trusted us to put their kids back in the classrooms, knowing that they would be protected. And so to me, this is just adding one more layer, albeit a wholly Swiss cheese layer because of the opt-out option, but it's just one more layer of mitigation to help say to those families that we're doing the best we can to protect their kids in our classrooms. I just wanted to add that because we, most of us are, all of our goal, we know the best way our kids learn is in the classroom, and we want to keep all of our kids on campus.
Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Eric, thank you for the comments about reminding us the importance of being civil. And what I'm going to take away from tonight is your analogy of COVID is like being a Tennessee football fan. I remember when it was so good and wish it still was, because it sure is sucking right now. I thought that was a great analogy and one I could definitely relate to in both sides of it.
Ms. Cleveland?
Just a quick question. I want to make sure that I'm clear on this. In another couple weeks, or in September, if this is voted no, if it wins on no, we are still going to continue to require mask mandate for elementary as much it is because of the opt-out and mask optional for middle and high school, correct? We're going to stay with the plan. So we're just, so really, the vote is then extending it, not only extending it, but having it middle and high school. So it's not really K through 12, we're just adding middle and high?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I may, when you mentioned extending it, I want to make sure that you're talking about extending it by grade level, not by time. Because Ms. Priya's motion was through September 21st.
Okay. And our last one was?
Through September 21st at 11:59.
Exactly the same.
Terrific. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wimberly?
It may not be necessary, but I would like to call the question.
Since you're the last speaker, Mr. Wimberly, I don't think it's necessary. We can go to...
I'd like to recall my call of the question.
Okay. I see no further requests to speak. So board members, Ms. Glenn, if you will, please read the motion again.
To extend universal mask requirement, grades K through 12 through September 21st, 2021 at 11:59 PM.
Is that correct? Did you want to say something, Mr. Golden?
Well, go ahead, Ms. Dossbrooks.
So in addition, remember, board members, teachers who are safely distanced at least six feet may remove their mask. Exemptions from 2020 through 2021 will be grandfathered and allow staff and students to exempt with the same set of exemptions and also recall that the governor's opt-out executive order would be in effect.
Board members, please cast your votes.
Your vote is eight yes, four no.
Thank you, board members. The motion passes. This meeting is adjourned. Go in peace.